He's on the Alpha Committee. Yeah. To those of you online, there'll be just a few more minutes. Justin, are you ready? Can you take that over to your seat? Okay. I will call this meeting to order for the Town of St. Joseph for June 9th. It is 6:05 PM. Statement of public notice.
Hereby provided are written notice and the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There is an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
Roll call, everyone is here tonight and our attorney, Chris Nelson, is online. Hi, Chris.
Hello.
Hello. Yep. I'll make, have a motion to adopt the agenda. No, that's not a motion. I'm taking a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The dates of the upcoming meetings are shown here. Our next town board meeting is on July 14th. Building Inspector, you should have gotten his report in your drive. Zone Administrator, Jay is here tonight if anyone has any questions for him. How's it been going, Jay? Okay? You can stand from there. Busy?
Yeah, busy. It's always a phone call. Issue just turned up.
Plant Commission, did you have anything you wanted to say, Anton? All right, Fire Chief is not here online. Joint Library, if you paid attention to what went on at County, County did delay vote on the Joint Library funding, primarily because North Hudson has not signed off yet. I have asked for the parties to get together to change the Joint Library agreement to show that the funding will come from the county, not from the municipalities. And once that's approved, that's the way it will go into next year. But that meeting has not been scheduled yet, but it has to be scheduled so that County can approve it and get it in their budget for 2023. Go ahead. So we, what we approved last time was our agreement to have County fund the library. But our Joint Library Agreement between the four of us says in it that we are funding the library. And that language has to be changed. We're still a joint library, but it's funded by the county. So that has to be changed. Yeah, it'll come back to you. So the parties, the four partners we're going to meet, take a look at the language as drawn up by the attorney, and then bring it back to all of our boards for approval. Okay? And then you also got your Park Committee information, or Park Committee, I'm sorry, Joint Library information from in our drive. It came to us today, I think, or yesterday. Parks, Trails, and Rec, did you have anything you wanted to add, Janet, to what's on the agenda? Okay. Public Works, anything that's not on the agenda? Do you want to talk just, just a little bit about mowing? How's it going?
Sure.
We have a new employee on board, full-time. We spent a week training them in, educating them on the Town of St. Joe, and he's been operating it quite well. My plan is to mow the entire township and then evaluate if I have time for him to put on a forestry head and go through the township with the forestry head and take down what limbs and branches and trees are in the site paths of the town roads, and then for fall, we'll put on a mower deck again and get it done one more time.
Thank you. Wisconsin Towns Association won't meet, I think, until July. I hope some of you can go. I'm not going to be able to go to that meeting. Bass Lake Rehab, I don't have anything on that except their picnic is here, I think, on Saturday. Internet Broadband, I don't know if there's anything new. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, the Bass Lake Road Picnic is...
Bass Lake Rehab.
Excuse me, the rehab is still pending scheduling in August.
Oh, it's August now?
Yeah, it's August, and there has been someone who's volunteered to host it.
Perfect. And do you want to take that off the calendar then? Perfect.
So it's still pending, but I would say that it sounds like they have a volunteer who wishes to host.
Internet Broadband. Internet Broadband. There is some information in your drive on Midco, but that is not on our agenda tonight to speak to, but I did have it put in there. We'll have it on next month. St. Creek County District 2 and 3 Supervisors, I don't see them here, so we'll move on from there. Next up is public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to public comment? If you do, could, Janet, could you pull that microphone close to the edge of the table and turn it on so she can speak? And it'll pick you up if you stand. Go right ahead.
Very good. Good evening. I'm Adele Moran, and Darla Myers asked me to represent her during the recent April 5th election recount. I am a retired IT professional with 30 years' experience in database management systems, and I'm also a certified business process improvement coach. I want to thank Terry Kelly and Carolyn Gertchen for hosting the recount, with special thanks to Barbara Conahay for her patience in walking everyone through the process. Thanks also to the poll workers, Amy Staniska and Mike Schulte. Although the recount did not change the outcome of the election, I want to share three observations from Election Day and the recount. Number one, the electronic poll book was online on Election Day. At the poll, the e-poll book appeared on my phone's Wi-Fi list. This represents an intrusion risk to the poll book itself. Number two, one too many Election Day voters. During the recount, 28 Election Day registrants were identified on the poll list, but 29 appeared on the voter roll I purchased from Badger Voters after the election, but before the recount. The voter roll contains the list of voters, the registration dates, and a history of how, absent to your app poll, they voted in many, in many races back many years. Barb said she had absolutely no idea how that happened, how we got that extra, how we got that extra person on the Election Day registration in the poll, or on the, on the Election Day registration. This week, sorry, last week, I was told that this was a duplicate and that the duplicates had been merged. But still, there is not an answer for how we ended up with an extra Election Day registrant that made its way onto the Badger Voter Registration. This represents an issue with the management of Election Day registration and voters. Number three, disenfranchised Town of St. Joe, so the voter. During the recount, a ballot was identified with a write-in for Darla that was not recognized by the tabulator, and therefore, the ballot was not counted. The voter did not fill in the circle next to the write-in, and therefore, the tabulator did not read the vote. Since the intent of the voter was clear, the vote was added then during the recount. This actually represents an issue with the Election Day vote counting process. Again, it's intent of voter. I wish to offer my expertise at no cost to identify issue root cause and define process improvements to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I have one, Teresa.
Oh, go ahead.
This is Darla Myers. Actually, it's directed to Teresa. At the last board meeting in May, when you were talking about the Public Works Alternates, you said that you had, you were a little concerned about a few things relating to the alternate appointments. What were your concerns?
This is public comment, so I'm not going to answer that question.
Well, you have in the past for some others.
Is there anything else you wanted to state?
Would you answer it in writing?
No, I didn't voice it at that time. I don't have to voice it now.
Interesting. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we will move, move on. We have a small assembly permit here for the chicken and corn feed at Willow River Saloon. I see Chris Cath is there. Anyone have any questions for him? If you, if you do, I will have him come up to the microphone. Anyone? Is it the same as last year, Chris? Exactly same. Anyone? Otherwise, they'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion for the small assembly permit for chicken and corn feed for the Willow River Saloon. Second.
Any other discussion regarding this? Not on the agenda with the date. The date is August 7th.
For August 7th.
And are you going to accept that amendment?
I will accept the amendment and second motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. And then we're going on to licensing. So we have this list of licenses. The first list, starting on page two, is the liquor establishments. And for this, you can do the Class A and the Class B all in one motion, but you do need to state what it states on the agenda. So who wants to make that? Is that going to be you? Okay, go ahead.
Move to approve the following liquor establishment renewal applications for the date of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2023. This first portion is listed as Class A Beer and Class A Liquor Licenses. B&amp;L Liquor Store, 1369 Main Street, Holton, Albert A. Severson Agent. Renewal application has been made for 1369 Street. Am West, Inc., doing business as Bob &amp; Steve's BP, 1103 County Road A, Hudson, Wisconsin. John Jurlo, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for the convenience store located at 1103 County Road A. Landmark Services Cooperative, doing business as Countryside Cooperative, Burkhart Sanics, 1088 County Road A, Hudson, Wisconsin. Jim Dell, President and Emily England Ealing Bowl Agent. Renewal application has been made for the convenience sales floor and the coolers. Class B Beer and Class B Liquor Licenses, Bass Lake Cheese Factory, Inc., 598 Valley View Trail, Somerset. Penny Rearman, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for the inside and outside retail, including deck and picnic areas within the one-acre lock. Myers GM Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Cajun Club, 1400 Main Street. Nicole Jacobson, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for all indoor areas and includes enclosed patio area. Big Guys Barbecue Roadhouse, Inc., 1237 Highway 35, Hudson, Wisconsin. Craig Lund, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for the main floor, main bar, back bar, two patios, designated grass, walk-in cooler, and basement. White Eagle, GC LLC, 316 White Eagle Trail, Hudson, Wisconsin. William Block, President and Matthew Corcoran, Agent. Renewal application has been made for the beverage cart, sub house, and grill shack. Willow River Saloon, Inc., 1106 County Road A, Hudson, Wisconsin. Christopher Cath, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for the wood frame building and the pavilion and partial parking area. J4 Bar, 4D Stations, doing business as The Next Stop, 1369 A, Main Street, Holton, Wisconsin. Jacqueline Garsky, President, Albert Severson, Agent. Renewal application has been made for the serving bar, dining area, storage room, hallway, bathroom, and outside designated seating area. Game Unlimited, Inc., 871 County Road E, Hudson, Wisconsin. Peter Malloy, President and Agent. Renewal application has been made for the clubhouse and picnic areas.
Okay, is there any other discussion regarding any of these? Go ahead, sir.
There's, there's discussion. I have a question on application for White Eagle Golf Club. The schedule for appointment of agent corporation nonprofit organization form. There's one question that was not answered. Is applicant agent subject to completion of responsible beverage training course? It's not answered, but beneath it is, does have a response. Can we move forward with this application?
I believe you can, because the response was that... What's the response to that?
Forty-one years, but the response does not have if they are or are not applicable for training on this course.
Or they've had their training, is what you're saying.
Nope, that's fine.
Oh, my goodness. That's their residency. They do not have to have the...
They do not for the class B?
No, because they, if they're not in the building itself. Yeah, so if they're not in the building selling, many of the agents do have theirs, but many do not.
Okay, it was the only application that didn't have that.
Okay. Anything from anyone else? Go ahead.
I do have an amendment for the B&amp;L Liquor Store, the first one, number one. It said that the renewal application has been made for 1369 Street, and that really should read 1369 Main Street.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that you missed, I saw that, and I think you missed it. Did you want, who have seconded it? Justin, you want to second that amendment? She corrected the Main Street here instead.
I second.
I didn't second.
Oh, he seconded, sorry.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on these? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes, and then next will be cigarette and tobacco.
I move to approve the following cigarette and tobacco establishment renewal license applications for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2023. B&amp;L Liquor Store, Inc., 1369 Main Street, Holton, Wisconsin. Albert A. Severson, Agent. Over-the-counter Sales, Am West, Inc., doing business as Bob &amp; Steve's BP, 1103 County Road A, Hudson, Wisconsin. John Jurlo, President and Agent, over-the-counter sales. Landmark Services Cooperative, doing business as Countryside Cooperative, Burkhart Senate, 1088 County Road A, Hudson, Wisconsin. Jim Dell, President and Emily Ealing Bowl Agent, over-the-counter sales. Myers GM Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Cajun Club, 1400 Main Street, Holton. Nicole Jacobson, President and Agent, over-the-counter and vending sales. Big Guys Barbecue Roadhouse, 1237 Highway 35, Hudson, Wisconsin. Craig Lund, President and Agent, over-the-counter sales. White Eagle, GC LLC, 316 White Eagle Trail, Hudson. William Block, President and Matthew Corcoran, Agent, over-the-counter sales. Willow River Saloon, Inc., 1106 County Road A. A, Hudson, Wisconsin. Christopher Cath, President and Agent, over-the-counter sales. J4 Bar FD Stations, doing business as The Next Stop, 1369 A, Main Street, Holton, Wisconsin. Jacqueline Garsky, President, Albert Severson, Agent, over-the-counter sales.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding these? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and that passes. Just so that the public is aware, all of the licensing for operators is together on here. We have ours separated by color because we do a separate approval on first and second, one and two-year licenses for renewals, and then one and two-year licenses for brand new. So you want to do these together, but separately? So the renewals first and then the news? Okay, go ahead.
I'll read them. I move to approve the following operator license renewals for the term of one year, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2023. Jeremy Ryan, B&amp;L Liquor Store. Jennifer Bedner, Big Guys Barbecue. Carrie Dwsnick, Big Guys Barbecue. Stacy Johnston, Big Guys Barbecue. Rachel Elbrich, Cajun Club. Timothy Briggs, Landmark Co-op. Krista Gores, Landmark Co-op. Kaylee Johnson, Landmark Co-op. Courtney Sater, Landmark Co-op. Krista Aver, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Jamie Backenstoon, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Courtney Cock, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Janessa Seedling, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Mike Dineen, Willow River Saloon. Sue Manning, Willow River Saloon. Stephanie Churchill, Willow, Willow River Saloon. Erin Cutler, Willow River Saloon. Tyler Haynes, Willow River Saloon. Riley Daggett, Willow River Saloon. Carrie Ann Logergan, Willow River Saloon. Traya Freer, Willow River Saloon. Scott Dancer, Willow River Saloon. That concludes the one year, and now we will go on to two-year operator licenses for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024. Paula Blum, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Stefan Clunky, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Mike Cannon, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Carolyn Squires, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Melinda Galen Worth, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Brandy Brabec, Big Guys Barbecue. Desiree Wilson, Big Guys Barbecue. Kayla Shonoff, Bob &amp; Steve's. Charlie Elifson, Game Unlimited. Derek Gilbert, Game Unlimited. Emily Cotts, Game Unlimited. Crystal Pavel, Game Unlimited. Kennedy Brown, White Eagle Golf Course. Chloe Hoxford, White Eagle Golf Course. Paige Hillman, White Eagle Golf Course. Sophia Jonas, White Eagle Golf Course. Anna Kruger, White Eagle Golf Course. And that concludes my list.
And would you correct it to say Anna? It's not Ann.
Correct to read, which one is that?
Last one. Anna.
Anna Kruger?
Yeah, you said, I only heard Ann.
Okay. I will, I will amend the, correct the motion to read Anna Kruger, White Eagle Golf Course.
Are you going to second?
Second.
Any other discussion regarding the renewals? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then we'll go on to the new ones.
I move to approve the following new operator license for the term of one year, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Madison Lovell, Big Guys Barbecue. Ariel Aaron's, Bob &amp; Steve's. Devon Rondu, Bob &amp; Steve's. Jenna Centimoli, Landmark Co-op. Kyle Reisch, Landmark Co-op. Caitlin Hugo, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Courtney, excuse me, Rachel Mueller Lee, The Next Stop, J4 Bar. Allison Erhammer, Willow River Saloon. Samantha Jensen, Willow River Saloon. Christine Halverson, Willow River Saloon. Tracy Schockner, Willow River Saloon. That concludes the one-year applications. And I will now proceed on to the new operator licenses for the two-year period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024. Jessica Seibert, Bass Lake Cheese Factory. Bill Hendrickson, Game Unlimited. Marissa Brown, White Eagle Golf Course. Natalie Brust, White Eagle Golf Course. Kaylee Delloy, White Eagle Golf Course. Madison Dulon, White Eagle Golf Course. Greta Glazer, White Eagle Golf Course. Gabriella Mack, White Eagle Golf Course. Hannah Ozdiken, White Eagle Golf Course. Last one is Brad Reivers, White Eagle Golf Course.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these new operators? I didn't find any issues with them, so I don't think anyone else did. Well, take a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
And then the last one is on the Mobile Home Park. Would you want to do that one too, or you want me to? It's not on there, it's just...
I was gonna say, I didn't, I left, I don't have any paperwork.
So this is their one-year renewal. They have to renew their license every year. And so they have sent a check for $500 because they're not doing any seasonals. There are dailies, so to speak. So I'll make a motion to approve the Mobile Home Park license as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it, and I please state for the record that it did include their, their insurance paperwork in the bond as we request.
Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. The next thing on the agenda is for the 4H, would like to use our building again for their meetings. And I put them on this part of the agenda because I know there's young people here, so they can be here. I'm going to say to you two at the table, maybe you want to go aside a little bit, because there's quite a few of them here, and I'm not sure who wants to come up and speak to this. But if you want to hit the green button on the microphone, they can come up and speak. Just move to the side. You don't have to move all the way off, but just give them a little space. There you go. So Jan contacted me and asked me to put this back on here. You know, through COVID, we did not let anyone use this building, and so now they're requesting for use of it. So go ahead, whoever wants to speak first, introduce yourself.
I'm Jan Gavin, and I'm a St. Joe resident at 555 Birch Lake Road in Hudson. And I brought with me today the Mason family. And they've been long-term 4H members in the Rolling Hills 4H Club too, and Jared is our vice president.
Okay.
So you want to say anything, or do you want me to read my letter?
Well, I think everybody got the letter.
Got the letter?
I know. Jared, did you want to say something?
Just wondering if we could come back to use the building, because we've used it at least all the time that I've been here, and we had a lot of stuff here.
Yes, I know, you have all that here. I know. And it was a little hard during COVID. I'm sorry, because we cut everybody off, because it was just so hard to keep clean for what we had to do at the time. So I think the board might be in a different place and be more open to this.
We hope so. We would love to be able to come back and have our meetings here.
So you're asking, you meet on the third Sunday of each month from September through May, and on the third Tuesday of each month during June, July, and August.
Correct.
And you have 35 members.
At this time, yes.
At this time. So where does the board want to be on this?
I make a motion to grant permission to use the building for the 4H group for 2022.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Can we do that and have us come back maybe here in January and take a look at this and see how it's gone? Would you be okay with that?
I guess that's fair, yeah.
Or would you like to extend your motion to be longer than that? I don't know. I don't know where the board's at, so I'm just asking the board where you want to be on this.
I'm delighted that they're utilizing the building and the moving forward with their group, so I have I have no problem. I have no problem redoing it, I guess, strike my.
May I add something to your?
Go ahead.
So you know, our 4H year starts in September?
Yep.
And goes into August.
Right.
So if we were to, you know, be able to have that guarantee that we could meet during those winter months too, inside, it's really hard to find another place to meet.
Sure, so that's great.
I'm, so I'll pull my motion, my second back, because you have to make amendment.
I make a motion that we grant the use of the building to the 4H group, Rolling Hills 4H Group, for a three-year term.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion from anyone?
Like discussion that does, I'm in favor of.
Turn your mic, turn your mic on.
I'm in favor of the 4H meeting here, but I do think maybe that it should run along with their term for what's their years, and I really think that it should come back every June for review because it puts future boards in a position where they have an opportunity to weigh in. I also want to know, because I don't know, I believe as a nonprofit, the 4H meets here without a fee? Or is that incorrect?
No, they've met here without a fee. Our biggest thing is, is if it's not cleaned, and we have to clean it, then we would charge back.
And that was going to be my other question is, when do we clean this building? Because if we could change it so that if they moved on the third Tuesday, if we were being, if it was being cleaned on the third Wednesday, that would be at no additional expense to the town.
They're cleaned every two weeks, that's how it's on a rotation, so would not necessarily work out with their meetings.
Might be close, yeah.
Well, it will sometimes, but on those five-week months, it throws it off. It's every two weeks is what we get cleaned. Our concern in the office has been in the past, not so much with 4H, but with other groups, is they're not cleaning up after themselves. The girls would come in and there was pot cans and bottles and stuff all over the place. Well, we have lots of trash cans, it's easy to put it all away. And that's the thing that we looked at with groups that were using it. If they didn't clean up, we said, sorry, if we have to clean up, the answer is no.
And that was going to be my statement, then if we're not going to have the cleaning service come in the day after.
Right.
Then at the end of the meeting, all the trash, anything that used that night needs to go in plastic bags and be put in the, there's dumpsters right outside the building, so you don't even have to put it in your cars or anything else, just clean up all the trash and put it out, because we had, they just don't attract very good creatures when we have pizza boxes and stuff in the trash.
We finally got the mouse control, mice under control in this building.
That's kind of.
Ask Chris, he's had to kill one in the middle of a meeting, so.
And I ran over one with my chair at a meeting that night. True story. So that was just where I'm, that's just, that was my.
If I can add too, I mean, we do have parents here that come with the kids, and we have a host family or two at every meeting, and their responsibility is to make sure the town hall looks as clean or better when we leave. It would very much help us if you had a little checklist of what you expect.
Sure, sure, we can do that.
Provide that to our host families.
The clerk can do that.
Jan, what's the age group of the children in 4H currently? I know it could change.
Kindergarten through freshman and college.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's all ages, it's very, very rewarding, but a good thing for, you know, to have that in our community, I think.
So instead of having him change his motion, how about if he just adds to it that they come back here in June for review? And that gives the board an option to weigh in.
Boards, yeah. Do you have any objection for if they move the chairs, the tables, because these kind of took, we had to redo these from being.
Well, we have these signs on the front that says, do not move. The chairs can get moved, but they need to get put back, yeah.
So I think we would just make that as part of the checklist.
Check, yeah, the checklist.
Yeah, so the cleaning and reassembly of the room.
Yeah.
But these are hard to move, I will tell you, I put them on moving pads to move them.
Very much try not to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you just want to add to your motion that they, that we have them back in next June?
Do you want to withdraw my second again?
Yep.
Yep, I withdraw my second.
In addition to that we review their conduct each year in June.
Second.
Everybody else happy with that? Is that okay with you guys? Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, congratulations, welcome back.
Welcome back.
I know, yes.
Are they going to be using the ball field on Sundays, or do you?
Oh, that's right, thanks for asking.
We would have had to reserve that already, and I don't think so. Think they're combining teams across the county this year, so I have not heard they're using this.
Well, would you let us know if they want to?
Definitely.
Okay.
That's a different.
You have it open.
I think we told the people who are using it that Sunday was for 4H, so.
Okay.
So let us know.
Definitely will check that, I will.
I'm glad to see 4H is back.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Carter, I see you in here. Good, if you guys are okay with this, I'm going to make a motion to move 16D up to this part of the agenda.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and Carter, you want to put that up on the screen, is that what you're asking to do? Are you on Zoom? So if you're on Zoom, you should be able to come right on there, just a second. Oh my goodness, come on. There we are, he's up, he's up. Carter, you want to come out here at the table? Grab a chair and. Okay, so Carter's the one that worked on the Perch Lake Boat Launch Staircase Project, and he's here to show us how it's all come out.
So this presentation really is a kind of timeline and time lapse of what I had done for the preparation of the project, that execution, and what the finalization of the project can look like. So here were my first brainstorming ideas. This first main picture that you can see on here was, oh, let's see here, there we go. So this first big picture that you can see on the right here was a mock drop of what Revard Stone had given us with a collaboration of my ideas and John Hopkins' ideas. And then if you see that here on the top left, those are some rough draft drawings that I originally made for a one staircase to be implemented, which was later scrapped after I soon found that it would cost roughly twice as much as the stone staircase. And it wouldn't really be able to survive the climate, excuse, excuse me. It wouldn't really be able to survive the climate and the harshness that the boat launch would have. And then the bottom left, that was just a quote that Revard Stone gave me from the drawings that were given on the right here. There we go, so on the right is a picture of me standing next to all the stone, I'll see if I can put this up. So on the right, that's a picture of me next to all the product that we were able to receive. The picture in the middle is where all of the other product was. And then on the left was a final quote of what the cost of all the stone was, which came out to be around $607. And then here's a slide of the execution of what we had done for the staircase, and it's kind of been a little bit of a loop sequence, but if you start off in the top left here, we, what we first had to do initially was that we had to uproot a lot of trap rock from the location. And thanks to Rick Haley that's sitting right over here, he saved us roughly a good three weeks' worth of work by simply going in there with a skid loader and helping us remove all that rock, which was really nice of him. And then this picture on the top right here, that shows all the trap rock laid out, organized for implementation at the staircase. At the bottom left here is my friend Adam, who's actually standing right back there. He was one of the volunteers that came and helped me out with this project. The second picture to the right, right there, that is my other volunteer, Sam. And he came out to help us put in the first three steps. And these two middle steps right here are the two, they're the two platform steps that we have, so they're much longer and much more accessible for other people, I guess, if you want to put it that way. And then right here on the right side, you have the completed product of the first, what seems to be the five steps. And on the far right picture, that is where the completed handrail plus the five steps are. Here's a finalized picture, if it'll load up real quickly. There we go. So this picture on the left is just one picture of what the finalized staircase looked like. On the left, right over here, that's where we have the handrail. And on the left side too, right at the bottom of the handrail, we have a whole lot of trap rock to support the steps from the left side. In the middle, you can see where the steps are, and here's a much better picture of it on the right side. And then right on the outside, we also put another layer of trap rock, and because this is a boat launch, we wanted to protect the stairs. So putting that extra layer of trap rock there would prevent the stairs getting destroyed if someone were to back in, back their trailer right onto it. And then on this next slide that I have, it is going to be a picture of what the site had looked like beforehand. And here's a picture of what it looks like right now. So overall, this took us around two and a half weeks to put in compared to the five or six months that I had to go through, you guys, to get this project done, so. So if anything, this was the easiest. So if anything, this was the easiest part of the project, but I, but it really turned out nicely, and I was really happy on how it turned out. But again, here's what it looked like beforehand. Hopefully it'll load. Wow. In case it doesn't show up, that's what the after piece looks like, and I'm not sure if this last slide will show up, but after we added up the total cost of the permit, the materials, and the stone, the permit, it cost $360, which you guys were able to cover, which I'm very thankful of you guys. The materials, that cost us around $450. The stone, oh yeah, there we go.
Yep.
The stone cost around $600, and the total cost of the staircase was $1,400. However, with the audited permit cost, we were able to stay within the budget and have roughly around $100 or so to spare. So overall, we were able to do it efficiently, effectively, and well, not go over budget, which I am super happy about.
So tonight, on your approval tonight, is approval for the check for him for the materials of 44389. The town already paid the permit, and Revard Stone charged my town credit card for the stone because we don't pay tax on it, so that's why we did it that way. And yes, without the permit, you would have been under budget, but unfortunately, we had to pay for that permit. I want to say thank you very much.
No problem.
It is an awesome job, and we need to give you a.
Means a lot for you guys, thank you so much.
You're welcome. I also want to say thank you to the people that helped you, because obviously you didn't do this by yourself.
Oh, no.
So that's awesome that they all helped to make this town look better and operate in a much better fashion. Does anyone else on the board want to say anything?
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, thank.
If you just have tumor or something stuck by there, I think, give you a little flashlight.
Yeah.
Borrowed material, readying that launch area.
Okay.
It's on the list, yeah.
I think the stairway is going to be there for many, many years.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Hit each post with PSA. It's just cool, that's all, I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Carter, thank you so much for doing that for the community of the Town of St. Joseph. I know that hundreds, if not thousands, of people use that access every, every year, and you've done a terrific job to meet the character of the area along with your volunteers, helpers. Thank you to all of you for doing that, for, for, for all of the people that will enjoy that for many, many years to come, when they've long since don't know who Carter is.
Yeah.
Again, thank you so much.
Did it for an equal self, right?
Yes, yeah, that's what it was for, yeah.
But.
It's just awesome for the Town of St. Joseph.
Yeah, it is.
And I was really happy that I was actually able to find a problem that really needed fixing too, because even when I was building this thing, there were so many people like, oh, are you putting in the staircase here? Oh, thank you so much, this means so much to us. And the amount of public things I got to, even while it was only half-done as well, it was absurd, it was crazy. So I'm just really happy that the project that I chose to do was really well worth it, and it's actually going to benefit the community a lot.
It will. Anyone else want to say anything to him? Just thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's really all I have, so.
Okay, well, thank you so much for bringing the presentation. Can you forward that to the clerk?
Oh, yeah, totally, I could do that.
Do that, and then your check will be ready, you can pick it up tomorrow if you want.
For sure.
What time are you going to be here, so he has some idea?
Yeah, totally, I could come right in the afternoon, so it shouldn't be that bad.
Okay.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. There, we're back off. Rick, do you want to put that light switch back on? We're going to go back up here to the waiver to a road setback for David Laillier on 1226 Red Oak Road, is David here? There you are, sorry, come on up to the microphone. So you're asking for a waiver to the road setback for a shed that you want to put on, if you'd like to explain that to the board?
Correct. The way my property is laid out with all the hills and the trees and the wetland area where I proposed to have my shed is the best spot for that, where it's flat, otherwise the man and the board here, it's just a driveway off County Road E, which I highly doubt that you guys would go for, because it's on the other side of my property.
All right. This is kind of a long motion by the Plan Commission, but let me read it. The motion was to recommend to the Town Board the approval of a setback waiver 60 feet to allow for the construction of a pool shed due to the findings that the purpose of the waiver is not based exclusively upon a desire to increase the value of the income potential of the parcel of land, thus granting such waivers necessary for preservation and enjoyment of property rights, substantial property rights of the applicant and the alleged uniqueness or special circumstances have not been created by any one person having an interest in the waiver. That granting the waiver will not under the circumstances of this particular case materially adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the property, and will not under the circumstances of this particular case be materially detrimental to neighborhood aesthetics or injuries to the property or improvements of the neighborhood, that the waiver cannot be based on America inconvenience or financial hardship or self-created hardship for the applicant if the strict letter or the regulation were carried out. And that a waiver should only provide the minimum relief necessary to alleviate the hardship. Anything from anyone on the board on this?
Wow.
That was a big, long, good lord, yeah. I don't know, maybe you want to see if you can make those a little less next time.
Do you need a second, or you need me to?
Ah, that wasn't even a motion, that's just what the Plan Commission stated to you.
I make a motion to grant the waiver for the road setback for David Laillier at 1226 Red Oak Road, Hudson.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on the board? And is there, oh, go ahead.
My discussion is.
Your own.
Would you please amend the motion to reflect that this was based on a recommendation from the Town of St. Joseph Plan Commission?
His motion doesn't have to state that.
I know that.
Yeah. You can think about that. Is there anyone here who received a letter on this waiver and wants to speak to it? Okay, did you want to amend your motion or not?
No.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Yes, sir, turn on your mic.
I, it says, my neighbors are all fine with it. I wish it said, all my neighbors are fine with it.
I didn't get to all of them yet.
Oh, okay.
But they're pretty much all good.
The ones closest to you that.
Oh, Chris was here.
Okay. That's, that's my big.
And so even though his, this is, the setback is off of Red Oak Road.
Yes.
Not the county road.
Yes.
Because he can't get an access off the county road, so that's part of the issue.
I didn't even try for County Road yet.
Well, they're not going to let you because you're too close to Red Oak. They'll never let you, I know that. So anything else from anyone?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Anton, this was the one where initially the setback request was actually for less distance from the, but the Plan Commission requested we moved due to the the overhang on the roof, okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to figure out where your new building goes in relationship to your buildings that are already there.
My house.
Okay, so there is just the house, I must be on.
Yeah, it's a house.
He's in the corner.
Yeah. So did you say, I want to just know, did he stay in his motion 60 foot? It has to stay the amount, not amended to say 60 feet.
Well, it even on the sheet to trigger that.
It was in the Plan Commission's.
Yeah.
Recommendation to approve it. Just trying to help.
I guess I'll retract my statement.
So I'll retract my second.
Let's try this once more. I make a motion to grant the waiver for the road setback per the planning commission's recommendations to approve David Lallyer 1226 Red Oak Road Hudson.
Second. Is there a second? Are you seconding?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, you're set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, she'll send you the motion by email, so you will have that, so when you apply for a building permit, it'll be available to you. Um, let's see, that's here. Peter and Jason Engelhardt, the two lot miner at 777132nd Avenue. Who's up for that? That's, that's right, it's you, sorry.
I'm Mike Erickson with Four Seasons Land Surveying. And our father passed away last June, and so we're subdividing these two lots for the two boys.
Yeah.
Um, so we got two lots that are a little over 4.8 acres. Both are accessing off an existing easement that's coming off cul-de-sac off 132nd Avenue there. Um, staff comments, uh, were to clarify the driveway locations, and like I said, they're both going to come off through that existing easement that's shown there. Um, they also had a comment on the lot line that heads southwest across a pond, and basically that line's going across there, just so they both have access, lot 5 basically has access to the pond
Okay.
and the woods that's in there and stuff, so. I don't know, you guys have any questions?
Any questions on this one? Have you run this through county yet?
No, no. We haven't submitted to the county yet.
I make a motion to accept the CSM for Peter and Jason Engelhardt, two lot miner, 777132nd Avenue Hudson.
Second, with a question for.
Sure.
Second.
Go ahead.
To discuss, um, Lee, is Lee, really at some point, will you, will you weigh in on this or not in this case?
Well, there is.
Because there was going to say we'll have to have Tony.
Why, why?
There's a staff report. Because it's shoreline.
Yeah.
So they don't have any choice. It's shoreline.
Looking to educate myself.
Yeah.
Regardless, we have to submit to the county.
Right.
Right.
But we're sure the shoreline gets you there anyway.
Well, I mean, yeah, any CSM that anybody does has to submit to the county. We just need a town approval before we can submit.
Sure. So there was a staff report in here from Amanda Schaefer and Lee Mann. Was there anything on there we have not addressed?
Amanda and I chatted about this, and she incorporated my comments.
Right, because I think it's pretty straightforward. Everything meets the requirements. Is there any other discussion from anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Let me sign this for you.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next one, seven o'clock. And he walks in the door. You have perfect timing, John. Okay, lot line adjustment for Bill Holberg at 1338 Howard Road. So Bill was before us a while ago, and now he's back, and John, you want to come on up to the microphone? This is where you're coming, because we don't have, or either one of you, Bill or him, we do not have, um, a podium yet, because we don't have a new microphone, so you're stuck at the table. But it will pick you up if it's up straight.
All right, yeah, so this was presented, I think all but one of you were here last year. I don't know everybody, where you have in front of you, right?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, I have three parcels on, on Bass Lake, parcels one, two, and three, at the end of Howard Road, just north of the property you just looked at. Uh, anyways, uh, there are two buildings on those properties, and there's, there was not conformance, and if I wanted to do any additional building, uh, another garage or anything, uh, I had to get the, the lots to be conformant for the town to get land improvement. And so John's been working to do that, uh, and what I did is combine parcels two and three together, and, uh, one of the problems that was going on as well is one of the buildings uh, had been closer to the water's edge and then had gotten moved. And when it was moved, the properties previously were all owned by the same owner. When they moved the building, they put it back down, straddling a lot line. And so the whole purpose here was to, uh, be able to get two lots out of this. And so Jay was out at the property last summer. Uh, we put it together, presented it to the board last August. Uh, he said, and I was to get a conceptual review. At that time, you said, I believe the meeting manager said, "Good to go with the CSM." Uh, there had then, then been some discussions where John had to go back and forth with the county on things. Those issues have been resolved. There's been no change to the physical layout of what was presented, and the CF, CSM has been completed.
Right. So now that we're in your own zoning, all of these lot line adjustments have to come through the board. Does anyone have any questions for him on this? I think this is a great alternative to what you were dealing with before. So anyone want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for Bill Holberg at 1338 Howard Road Hudson.
Is there a second?
Second, but I, I believe it might be New Richmond and not Hudson.
Well, I'm reading right here.
Yeah. This is, which one is it?
Which one is it, Bill? Which one is it? We've got two different.
Well, the, the county has said it's Hudson.
Yeah.
And it's got a 54016.
Address.
Address. Does it say on here in Richmond?
I'll just, I'm going to have Tony pulled up. We're going to find out right now.
That might be the title on that part.
Is it on here?
It's on the, maybe at the bottom of the, down here.
Oh, it is. So we need to get an adjustment.
Well, that, that'll, I mean, on the final map, they could sign. That'll be correct. And that's just the title. The title of our has nothing to do with the boundary of this.
It's in the Richmond School District, so.
It's the city of Hudson, it's the Hudson Post Office. Your Hudson Post Office, so that's.
So, I don't, I don't.
The, the mailing address is Hudson, Wisconsin, 54016.
We'll get you a new server here.
According to the.
Oh, my goodness, John, we are a tough crowd here, aren't we?
Sorry.
Is there any other discussion from anybody on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. I signed this. Do you want to have this, John, so you can take it forward?
Yep.
And I just wrote on there about the Hudson.
Sure.
If you need to have me sign something else, I'll be back. I know, and she'll send that to you. Thanks very much, both of you. We appreciate it. Okay, major plat for Fields of White Eagle. This is coming more back before us because of a variety of reasons, and I guess I'll let you speak to.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as the agenda indicates, we're here to review and consider approval of the development agreement and other, uh, related documents for the Fields of White Eagle development. At any time, the town attorney can certainly interrupt me as I'm going along here. I will try to, to, uh, go through this in a succinctly as possible. So on the drive, we will start with just talking generally about the development agreement. The development agreement has been drafted and is acceptable to the developer, the attorney, and myself, as we've gone through it in the last couple of weeks. The language in the development agreement, for the most part, is the standard language. A few of the things that we should talk about as far as what makes this development unique, uh, in particular is the off-site improvements that need to be completed to the west of the plat along where the golf course and lot 11 from the previous plat reside. And I'll get into the storm sewer situation in that, with that in a little bit. So this development contract does have the letter of credit amounts in it. Those have been determined. They've been, uh, reviewed and accepted by myself or the town as well as there is a letter of credit that goes to the county, that the county has accepted the amount in that as well. We don't reference that necessarily in here the amount, but just for the board's information that that county letter of credit has also been reviewed and is acceptable. The, the other thing that we put in these agreements that is unique to each development, as far as at least the references, is we do include that any, uh, damages that occur to any of the existing roadways because of the development work will need to be repaired, uh, by the developer to the satisfaction of the town. Uh, in running through this, and just real quickly here, uh, why don't we get on the storm sewer part? That's talked a lot about in paragraph six. Uh, I put before you an exhibit, the stormwater exhibit that will actually be, uh, part of the stormwater agreement that is also on your drive. The stormwater agreement covers the following items. So the grass swales and the road ditches, the lot line drainage swales, the stormwater basins, the storm pipes, structures, and culverts, and the ravine improvements on lot 11, White Eagle. So those are all covered in the stormwater agreement. Uh, again, the verbiage in that agreement is basically standard from the past few developments that we've had. The county provides that language. We did add some language to cover the ravine improvements on lot 11. So then, looking at this exhibit, as you can see, on lot three is the main stormwater pond for the development. And there are some ditch, ditch drainage that comes into that pond. At station six plus 50, you could see the purple colored culvert going across the road, uh, south to north, where it outlets into the pond. And then at the northwest end of the pond, you can see the outlet of the pond goes to the south, goes to the road. There's a pipe that will go under the road to the west where it will connect with the existing pipe that comes from the golf course and takes drainage from the golf course to the ravine. There's also some ditch drainage to the south there in the front of lot 11, Eagle. Again, that's most easily identified by that green, uh, shaded area, which is the ravine that's being rehabilitated. So all those, those pipes come together and bring all of this drainage to the ravine. Uh, you'll also note at the very west end of the piping, we show another purple shaded section of pipe. And that picks up the road drainage along the north side of the road, uh, in order to get that into a pipe and then down to the ravine, necessitated just by the grades in the area and some of the existing features from the previous development that now need to be massaged in order to make this stormwater drainage work. So the ultimate issue for the town to be aware of in all this is, as is typical, the developer and ultimately the homeowners association is going to maintain all of the storm sewer facilities and appearances that aren't crossing the road and taking, you know, the, uh, that aren't, aren't crossing the road. Typically, the town just takes care of the culverts that cross roads and connect ditches, connect ditches. So normally, the stormwater basins are all taken care of by the homeowners association. This is a little different in that we do have pipes running along the town's road. Uh, again, that pipe being an outlet pipe for that pond, uh, we basically had a discussion with the developer to discuss, okay, which of these pipes are going to be developer slash homeowners association maintained versus town maintained? And as you can see on the legend, the two purple shaded pipes are the portions of the system that the town would end up maintaining. So the culvert crossing at station six plus 50, just to the south of the pond, and that pipe that crosses the road, uh, where the curb is on the west end of the piping, there's going to be a catch base in there picking up that drainage, and then that pipe taking it across to that existing pipe, then ultimately to the ravine. So those two pipes are the pipes that the town is going to maintain. The remainder of this system that is shown on this map, the pond, which is shaded in red, the other pipes that are shaded in orange, and the ravine, which is shaded in green, are all going to be maintained by the developer slash homeowners association. So that was a mouthful, so let me stop and see if there's any questions in regards to that. Or Chris, if you have any additions to what I just explained.
Okay, let's go to Chris first.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johnson and, and Lee. Uh, I appreciate, uh, that description very thorough and accurately covered everything. A- as Lee highlighted, this, um, development was, uh, perhaps a little bit different than, uh, ones, uh, the board ordinarily sees, because there were going to be these improvements that exist outside of plat. Uh, we spent some time working with the developer on that, and, and we believe, uh, now, uh, well, we know now that all that is, is handled. It's addressed in the development agreement and the stormwater maintenance agreement. Now, if long term, uh, because this would technically exist partially within the golf course and the White Eagle plat, if long term, um, the developer can enter into an agreement with the golf course and, uh, the White Eagle homeowners association, whenever they would take over maintenance of that, uh, portion of it, they would have the option to do that. Um, and that would be incorporated into our, uh, our agreements with the developer. Um, at present, though, that's, that's going to be maintained by the developers, as Lee stated and as, as laid out in those documents. Um, I've, uh, reviewed and, uh, the development agreement. Uh, it's ready for, uh, the board's approval. I'm able to answer any questions on it. That, uh, paragraph, uh, uh, six that addressed stormwater is, is perhaps a little bit different than, than what the board ordinarily sees, but that's because of we needed to address those outside of plat improvements. Um, I've also reviewed the, uh, covenants, uh, the homeowners association documents, and, and those are, um, ready to go as well. So, uh, the pieces, the pieces are in place, and we'll answer any questions.
Have they provided their letter of credit, Jed?
They have not provided the letter of credit.
Okay.
But the, the amount is known, and, you know, going forward, if the board were to approve this this evening, uh, they would not be able to start until all of that was in hand and the development contracts being recorded.
Okay. So do you have a question? Go ahead.
On.
Oh, you just turned yourself off.
On the areas west of lot three, where there's the majority of the footage of the piping laid out going into that cul-de-sac, are those two buildable lots? Even though it doesn't have a lot number on them on our diagram, are they still buildable?
Well, they're part, this is part of the original plat, isn't it?
Right, this is golf course.
Yeah.
I think you're talking about two golf courses.
These are, these are, these two are golf course lots. They've already been divided. There's a house on, there's a house on them. There's a house on this. Yeah, they have houses on it.
Okay, so we'll.
The plat starts where the pink one is, right?
That, that line just to the west of the pond.
There's a big, bold line.
Yeah. So where the little green area is the ravine rip raft, is that on an existing lot with a home already on it?
There is a home that is currently being built on it. And so one of the other details of, of this discussion is that the. The developer has identified the easements necessary for the homeowners association to be able to go in and maintain these things on that lot. And our, the, the easement drawings have been drawn up, the doc, documents with the. The verbiage, the agreement have been drawn up and it's our understanding that that property owner is. Meanable to those easements and obviously those will need to be signed and executed, you know, again as part of. The, the due diligence before actually construction vehicles can get moving on that.
And the, the property owner has also signed a, a, a sort of a letter of intent to give those, those easements as, as well. Hasn't. As far as I know, hasn't executed the easement docs. We've seen them and reviewed them, but the, the property owner all is, as Lee said, amenable. To the perpetual easement.
And then that buildable area on lot three is still. A pretty good sized area to be able to put a hole, a well and a pole on.
Correct.
All right. And those, are those big, is those orange piping? Like two foot or thirty inches? Is that what I'm reading on here? Is that what it's saying? And they're all under drought. So they're pretty good size.
Yeah, they're a decent size. Yep.
All right.
Thirty inch.
So I have a question. These piping, this piping is going to exist in our right of way under our road or alongside the road?
Partially under the road.
Why is that? Why, why isn't it next to it? And I mean, I understand that we have to cross somewhere, but why could this come across like that?
Well, again, if going across there, we would, there would be additional easements needed. For that. And so I think, I don't know, Jason, if you want to speak to that.
Right away?
I think Jason, maybe you would speak to that.
Oh, sorry. I should have brought you up right away. I apologize.
Um, Jason Rabberty with Stevens Engineers. I think the reason that we. It'd be difficult to get those pipes in, in the right of way without having to give additional drainage easements from those properties.
Okay.
You know, I guess. That's not something that we really looked at, running it outside the roadway.
My, my question would be, and I'm not a road person. I'm not, or a pipe person, but when we start putting those underneath our roads. How far underground do those pipes need to be when those roads are clawed off and for, for frost? Before it's. There are, there's either an impact to the town or an impact that would compromise these pipes underneath our road.
Well, so I'm going to get off track for a second, but Church Street is doing it like that.
Is it?
Oh yeah, Church Street will look exactly like this.
Okay, so the difference. So we're going to see this again.
The difference being is that they have to be maintained in our right of way. So I think there has to be something in that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris Nelson. I think there has to be something in this developer's agreement. I did not read every word of it. Cause I don't have internet where I've been. Something to say to the fact that any maintenance has to be approved by the town board at some point because they're working in our right of way.
I, I think they would have to do that regardless and, and I, I think we might want to do that as part of a maintenance agreement. Or this maintenance agreement as opposed to developers agreement because it would go beyond just the initial development of the property.
And that's my concern too. That's a little different than Church Street because.
Well.
Finding the pipes there in church.
I guess a, a couple educational points that I see is thirty inch pipes, they're designed not to plug. And then when we accept this road, we're going to own this road at the end of the development, right?
Right.
Correct.
So this is our baby no matter what.
That's what I'm wondering.
Are there manhole covers in any of this?
Yes.
Okay, can you explain that to me? Is that what this eleven and ten is or is that something else? Do you know that?
Ten, ten is pointing out the curb and gutter.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a copy of the drawing. Yeah, manholes have the, have, have covers. And so there is a manhole in the road.
Yep.
And there will be a manhole cover in the road. Yes.
I guess one more comment for us as board members in the future, we're going to see more and more of this.
Yeah.
Coming up because we're running out of decent places to build. And we also need to control our stormwater better.
So you're comfortable with this?
I am. I think the, the point is well taken though, as far as, you know, future maintenance, you know, the type of maintenance that. You know, on the, on the one end of the spectrum, you know, if it needed to be cleaned out, if the manholes need to be cleaned out, then. The developer and the homeowners association would have to, you know, hire someone to come in with a jetter.
Yeah.
You know, and, and clean it out. And so that's, that's somebody in the. In the right of way on the road doing work, you know, they would, they would need to flag that. They would need to. Take all of the safety precautions necessary in order to make that work. And so I think one of the things that we could take a look at. Is, you know, anytime anybody want to work, anybody wants to work in the town's road right of way, you know, there ought to be a permit. Of some type.
There, yeah, and there is.
Right. And so, you know, that could fall in, you know, within that, you know, and, and a, in a really, really, really worst case scenario. You know, where they might have to dig part of it up, which I can't imagine that with this type of pipe, but I mean, just. You know, in the grand scheme of the spectrum, you know, again, that would need to be permitted, that would need to be inspected by town, by the town and. And get approval from the town. So. And you know, one of the things that we will be looking very, very carefully at is, you know, when you put, when you put a pipe in a road. You know, that trench has to be compacted.
Yes.
Very, very well so that you don't experience settlement in the future. So that's something that, that we're going to look at very, very closely. And make sure that that happens the way it needs to happen.
So Chris, just to be clear, that we can approve the developer's agreement and the homeowners association agreement. Tonight, but you are still waiting on the letter of credit, the signed easements and the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, no, no construction or any improvements will start until those are obtained. And it's my understanding that they will be obtained very quickly. They've already had those discussions. But yes, those, those are ready to go.
The stormwater management agreement is also in your drive and is ready to go.
And when you said CSM revision, that's this?
No.
Oh, what's that?
That's a different issue.
Oh, that's that other one.
Yeah, let's save that for later.
Oh, we'll save that for later. I just want to make sure I have everything on here before I make a motion. While I'm writing this down, does anyone else have any questions for?
I'm still concerned, I'm still concerned about the stormwater pipe that's underneath the town road that in the future. Everything is fine in these agreements while everything is in new and in good working conditions down the road as you have deterioration of stuff. Now you have a section that is under the town road and the rest of it's on private property and it isn't real clear. Who's going to agree, how that's going to, I think it could be a future point of argument. Or who is responsible and who's going to pay for anything that would go to ripping up a town road to fix any piping that's underneath that road. And I don't think that's clearly spelled out in this homeowner agreement. It, it.
Be in that. That's what Chris is talking about in the, in the maintenance agreement, correct, Chris?
Uh, yes. And, and Lee, would you agree with that, that, that this is, is something that's covered by the stormwater maintenance agreement?
It is, it is. And, you know, I think, I don't know if, if you recall previous developments, but we've never had an exhibit like this.
Right.
For previous developments because of that issue that you bring up in regards. So this, this exhibit and the stormwater maintenance agreement is. It put together in such a way to make it clear. You know, in some ways clearer than previous developments because of that issue.
Right. And this is not, this, this is not the same of Church Street because it's our ravine, it's our road, it's our. Stormwater, the whole bit.
It's not our ravine.
Going into the ravine part.
I know, but the ravine is not ours. We, we have an ease, we have easements on that.
But that's all laid out ahead of time, how we're doing.
And that's what they're doing is what I understand with Chris is they're getting easements to do all this.
All right, I'll wait till we.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
The similarity is, is that there's going to be a pipe under the town's road. And in Church Street, there'll be a pipe. It's just who's maintaining it is different.
I have a question for the board before I make this motion. Are you comfortable with the attorney and our engineer approving? The signed easements, well, of course, a letter of credit, our, our engineer always does that in the maintenance agreement, or do you want that brought back? Cause I'm pretty comfortable with having them just do it.
I'm comfortable with it because they've, uh, are on top of watching it and I don't have any issue with it. If it don't happen, the job don't go.
Yeah. You had something?
I'm concerned with the existing road damage agreement.
Yes, what would you like?
Are there pictures? Are there this many feet of road before you get to the project? Cause we don't want to come back same way. A mile of road ripped up and you said we only had to take care of the first thousand feet.
Go ahead.
We take videos of all of the roads that the developer is going to use so that we have a record. Of exactly what the condition was beforehand and we obviously will compare that to when they're done. So thank you.
Perfect. Okay, I'm going to make an attempt at this and we'll see if it's right. And Chris, listen to this in case I do something wrong. We are going to approve tonight on the major plat for the fields of White Eagle, their developer's agreement. Their homeowners association agreement and declaration of covenants. Their stormwater management agreement and exhibit that goes with it. The easements that need to be signed, their letter of credit and the maintenance agreement. That will be part of this package. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that everything, Chris, or did I miss something?
I believe that's everything and based on discussion, I believe the intent was for. Staff, the town engineer and myself to. Do final review and approval of the letter of credit and, and easements.
And if you pull back your second, Chris, I'm going to add that to it. Chris Marshall, if you pull back your seven.
I'm retracting my second.
I'm all, add that these documents will be, have a final approval by the engineer and our attorney.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
Thanks.
Have at it.
CSM.
The C, oh, for goodness sakes, you don't get to leave yet. The CSM, that's on our drive. You can explain that to everyone.
Well, I'm going to have to defer on this one.
Listen to him.
This, this is not an item that, that I've been able to review in the last couple of weeks. In, in lieu of looking at these other things. I think we got it last Tuesday.
Okay.
I know the attorney has looked at it and maybe Jason, you could just kind of give a description of.
If you want to talk to it and then we'll have our attorney talk to it.
Um, so unfortunately, the, the CSM issues is not something that I've been taking care of. It's been the land surveyor, so got it.
This is to clean up that CSM, is that what I understand?
So, yes, yeah.
On that lot one that's up against that private road, right? No, old east west in the private road. Go ahead, Chris, you speak.
So there, there are four parcel lots and does the document in the packet, excuse me while I, I pull it up. Does it highlight? The. I, I don't think it's the, the color coded one that I got today, but anyway, there are four. Four small parcels and then the existing larger lot, which is labeled lot one. And part of the CSM will combine one of these small parcels. With that lot one and then the other, this will allow the other sort of small fragmented parcels to go back to the underlying. Or the adjacent property owners, one of which is the, is the town and they've drawn up. Quick claim deeds for each of these parcels to be granted back to the adjacent property owners. And have provided those. I believe we, we saw those today. But this is, this is what it's for is to, you see that small fragment parcel there on the. Right side of, of lot one, the east side of lot one, that is. That is presently a, a separate parcel and, and the CSM is combining that into, into one parcel. And then there's a few other small fragments to the left that the developer is going to grant to the adjacent property owners.
Anyone have any questions on this? Really, it's somewhat of a lot line adjustment is what this comes down to, correct?
That's correct. And in addition to without approval of the CSM, the deeds granting the. Fragment parcels to the adjacent property owners can't be recorded. So that's why the developer is requesting. To go forward with the CSM today.
Any questions on that for the attorney? I'll make a motion to approve the lot one CSM lot line adjustments.
Second.
Anything else of anyone? It does, it's, I'm going to say. Well, it's separate from the rest of us, so. I'm going to just say, I'm going to add to it as presented. How's that? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Thank you so much. You're set to go now. I think we got everything right.
Thanks, yep.
Thank you. I actually shared my screen. I thought I did so good on that. North Valley Estates, North Valley Estates is on here, if you remember last time. And I don't see anyone on here from them, but they're on here because they are. Were unaware that they would be getting a. Letter, an invoice from us regarding. Their matter before us because they asked for some information from us. So, oh, it's not in the drive, is it? Is it? So they wondered why they were being billed to discuss a potential seal coating and reduction of their letter of credit. And the entrance to the lot off of thirtieth, they were billed three and a half hours. So the total bill's three eighty eight fifty. Anyone want to take this matter up as to? They're asking for relief from this.
Didn't we have this discussion, a meeting or two ago about the same area?
That's what they were before us, yeah.
Is this the driveway that?
This is.
This is about they wanted to seal coat the road and they wanted to get their letter of credit reduced.
Yeah.
Of the driveway off of thirtieth that should not exist there.
Well, I guess what it is is the men were sitting here shaking their head agreeing to everything. Where are they tonight? Did anybody contact them or call them or? How do we?
They contacted us and they were, we said they were going to be on the next meeting, correct? Terry, do you know? Yeah.
They contacted us to ask for three hundred and eighty five dollars relief.
Three eighty eight fifty, yeah.
And they knew it takes town board action.
And we have an engineer we paid to give us this information. So I'm just asking if anyone wants to give them relief of their bills.
No.
I'm old to deny it.
Is it anyone?
Second. A little more discussion here. We, we're playing nice with them and the reason why I wanted to talk about it was. When that thing gets black topped. Shortly here and they still ain't took that out of there.
Right.
Oh.
They were very.
I was playing nice with them on the fact that, hey, get it out of there, call me, I'll help you get it out of there. And no actions taken.
They were upset because the contractor doing thirtieth used it to park his equipment at night.
Hey.
Which it was there, so he used it. If it would have been there.
We're all trying to get along here in this world. And guess what?
I brought up that we were redoing that road, which would include re-ditching and cleaning up around there. And there was a very small piece to make this go forward and they could have had a much bigger mess. We could have made it, cleaned it all up and came back and ripped it out. And we did not.
Well, here's, here's the bigger thing. If they would have had the thing removed, they wouldn't be upset. About the contractor using it when we first told them to get rid of it.
Here's the other thing, if we would have denied it in the first place, we wouldn't have had these three other board conversations about this. So if we would have just told them, no, use your driveway off your road.
That's right. Okay, so.
Well.
I have a motion on the table.
She made a motion to deny the request.
Yes.
And there's a second. Is there anything else from anybody? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the removal of the driveways on here because it's still sitting there. When are they asphalting there? When are they asphalting 30th?
Well, my understanding is the contractor is committed to getting that done before the end of June. We do not have a, a specific date.
Fine, then have our contractor take care of it and we'll add it to the taxes at the end of the year.
That's the way the board wants to go because it hasn't been removed.
Versus letter of credit pulling.
And they have, no, instead of adding to the taxes, we still have a letter of credit we can pull it from.
That would work also.
Okay.
Is there any concern that we will exceed the letter of credit from that removal?
No.
No.
Hey, Chris, speak up. Do they have a chance to come here and talk about it or we just pull the trigger on it?
Well, I, I believe we can, uh, we can go forward if they haven't met their obligations as, as laid out, so.
I agree to take the advice of our attorney and that we are in the, it is within our right to do proceed forward.
So who wants to make the motion for the removal of the driveway?
I move to remove the driveway on uh 30th street that is on the North Valley um, pro uh development project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
By when?
Well, I would say ASAP, as soon as you can get locates done.
I would say based on our contractor's need.
I can get a work order out to him tonight.
Okay.
But it'll take him probably a week to get locates, I'm sure. Unless locates have already been done out there. Have locates been done?
Well, the, there is fiber under that.
Coordinate with Ryan.
Coordinate with Ryan, okay. But Ryan, they did not do locates along that road at all? Sorry, I'm making you.
Every contractor that has to complete ex- has to perform their own locates.
Okay.
As a cur- I will bend my motion that as a courtesy of the town deems it necessary, we can send them a certified or registered letter stating, um, giving them a deadline and say that will be done by this time or our contractor is gonna take care of it and we're going to uh proceed by taking it off of their letter of credit.
Well, we have a motion. Now you're asking to give them another deadline, so the motion wasn't.
I'll remove, I'll remove my last comment, please.
Okay.
That's better.
Anything else from anyone? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, it passes. Yippee yip, onto that one.
So just a, another note on that, Chris, you and I'll probably need to coordinate on that letter of credit issue.
Understood.
This Chris.
Yeah. Attorney.
Okay. All right, Perch Lake Road.
Yes, this item tonight is to discuss the erosion issues along Perch Lake Road. Um, as the board is aware, uh, there's erosion occurring to the west of 60th Street along the edge of the road. Uh, the reason for that is that the vegetation along that road uh did not get established fully and this spring there were rainstorms, uh possibly even snow melt that contributed to this. So we've taken a look at the issue. Uh, we've considered several options. Uh, one of the options we considered was having contractor come back and uh reseed, fill up the area that's eroded, reseed, reestablish. Uh, we also talked about uh putting in some uh material into that uh void in order to uh, you know, some kind of millings or other kind of gravel that would be more stable. The issue with both of those options is we're concerned that especially with the revegetating option, that there would be uh another rainstorm before it got vegetated again and we would just be chasing the issue uh for the long term. So to that end, we've, we are looking at uh the option of installing flumes along the edge of the roadway, asphalt flumes, uh similar to what we installed, I think it was last year in Birch Park.
Yep.
Uh, to the east end of the development, just uh near the guardrail uh on that road, uh which seems to be working well. Uh, we do have a quotation from uh Monarch to do that work in the range of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the contract for stout is closed, so we would look to add this to the 2021 rehab project. Um, stout for their part in this, uh, they would come and they would prep the areas next to the road uh so it'll be ready for Monarch and they would be doing that at no cost uh due to the situation. And we would recommend that this get done as soon as is possible. I know Ryan has talked with Monarch and again, they're trying to get everything done in the town here before the end of June when, you know, their schedule starts to increase. Um, so that is what is before the board for consideration tonight.
Um, anyone have any comment on this on the board? I mean, I just, so we have the choi- the choice is to put in that asphalt curb and gutter.
Well, it's actually kind of a valley gutter along the edge of.
So it's kind of a swale that goes along the edge and contains it. Okay, go ahead.
Do, do we pin that additional asphalt to the original asphalt?
Yes.
Okay.
And we can use funds from our impact fees for this because this is part of the widening project, correct?
Yes. So let me just make clarification. When you say pin, what, what do you exactly mean by pin? What we would do is we would make sure there's a clean edge. We would tack the edges so that the asphalt would bond like we did in Birch Park. We wouldn't be putting in actual pins. So I'm not sure what you meant by pins.
Yeah, the, I've seen where when they install them asphalt flumes that they run rebar down and then the, then the blacktop is embossed in that. I just feel I like flumes, but pin it.
Well, the, the addition of rebar to that operation would be exceedingly costly.
Think so?
Well, today with steel, um, it's, rebar is an issue uh in the industry. But again, the, the flume in Birch Park is, is, I looked at it today, it's holding up, it's doing its job. I think if, you know, Ryan will be out there to make sure it gets installed properly. I think it's a, you know, it's the best long-term solution that we have.
There's a big flume down here on the corner of 122nd and County Road V and it's probably six, eight feet.
Okay.
And drops down in the ditch. It takes a lot of water off of the hill of V all the way down.
Okay.
County put that in over sub, putting that in, it was not pinned in there and it's twenty-five years old and it's amazing how well it's held up.
I just didn't want it to.
I mean, what do you think?
Uh, are we worried about the other side too, where the guardrail?
Both sides.
Oh, it's both sides. Oh, good.
Okay.
Okay. And it's gonna be long enough so that we won't come back in another meeting and add on to our little flume?
Yes.
Good.
At the bottom of the hill, it will be directed into the ditch and with rip rap.
Great.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend a swale type flume down both sides of Perch Lake Road to contain the um water flow and that we will use impact fees to pay for the bill when it comes.
Second.
Any other discussion? Should I put on there something with Monarch? Do you want me to add Monarch to it?
That would be good and the amount of twelve to fifteen thousand.
Pull your second back.
And who's doing the prep before?
Stout.
Stout, so I'll add.
For no cost.
At no cost. So I'll add to my motion that stout construction will do the prep work at no cost and that Monarch will install this asphalt um for a cost of twelve to fifteen thousand.
Second.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. What did you have to figure out? Okay, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it passes. Um, update on 30th, you just said that we're gonna get asphalt in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Is it finally hardened up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything on Church Street?
Uh, Church Street, just a quick update on that. Uh, the attorney uh has researched the right of way issue on Peterson Street. Uh, we will need to obtain right of way on Peterson Street from that property owner on the south side. Uh, we will be contacting that property owner shortly. Um, also, the goal is to submit the Riverway District CUP application in September. Peterson Street, a portion of it is in the Riverway District, so we need another CUP, conditional use permit. And our goal is to submit that in September, so it's heard in October. Um, the issue with bringing it in later than that is the board may recall that when you submit these CUPs, it's the first Tuesday of the month and then they, they review it the fourth Thursday of the following month. So if you submit in October, you're butting up against Thanksgiving on the fourth Thursday. And if you submit in November, you're butting up against Christmas on the first Thursday. So we wanna get it in so they hear it in October. So that's, that's the update on that.
Can you educate uh the board on how much approximate property is needed on Peterson Street to purchase?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Chris, do you remember how much, how much, if there was any right of way on the north side?
On the north side?
I mean, there wa- there was no, there was no right of way on the north side either, right? The, the properties just came right up to came right up.
That's correct. On, on the north side, yes. I mean, there, there is technically right of way on the north side, but the properties on the north side are encroaching, their structures are encroaching, so there's really not an opportunity to expand. However, the road got built, it was not really built uh as indicated by the, the plaque. Um, so if the, if the road's gonna be expanded, it needs to be expanded to the south. I don't know the exact degree uh for number of feet of, that would need to be acquired, acquired.
Okay.
So all of that will be coming before us for approvals as we move through this.
I was just curious this evening.
Okay, and we have not heard anything on the targeted runoff management.
Results will be in August.
So August will be a good month, huh?
Yes.
Okay. And I know we did not do anything on the B I L, but I was leaving it on there just in case something came up.
I don't have any new info on that. Again, if, if the, I think we've talked about this in the past. If the town is interested in looking into that further, we probably first need to identify some potential projects or project.
Yeah.
So sit down and, and have a discussion about that.
And we do have time. Anything else for him on, on the major road stuff? Otherwise, we'll move on to public works. Uh, the 2022 road maintenance project, where are we on that?
We had our pre-construction meeting on the May 20th. There's a tentative start on the road patching on 80th and Old E East, week, the week of June 20th. And then the seal coating itself and crack ceiling would, would happen after July 4th.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, impact fees. You had talked to me about whether we should continue or discontinue the road ones. We still are in the middle of park stuff, but on the road ones and you wanted to bring that towards, to the board.
I did want to, to at least have an initial discussion uh of that. The, the impact fee balance as of May 12th is eighty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Of that eighty-three thousand dollars, there is approximately five thousand dollars plus this Perch Lake Road
Stuff.
Stuff, so say twenty.
Twenty.
Um, left to use impact fees. So the roads that were identified in the facility plan, Perch Lake, 85th and 50th Street are all completed. 20th Street was also in the facility plan, but that was removed as a collector and was not, not expanded um as wide uh due to uh the fact that the Public Works Committee and the board, you know, decided that that was really no longer a collector based on the work that was done after the bridge project.
Right.
As well as, as the width. So that, that street was removed from that status and so that road does not get impact fees for any of its construction. So basically, right now, from our analysis and working with uh the clerk, uh, there is a surplus of impact fees in the town's account. And there are no more roads that they can be applied to.
Sounds like we need to change the regulations.
Right, right. But anytime you change an ordinance, it has, and in this particular case, has to go to a public hearing. So we're bringing it to the board at this time to decide if that's what you wanna do and I can schedule that at the next meeting.
I guess, I guess there needs to be maybe tonight, ain't tonight, but I mean, I look at, I guess, one question, are other communities keeping it to maintain the roads better?
Well, the villages in, in town of Somerset still have impact fees.
Yeah.
Um, I know the city does. Many communities still have them, but as you move through this, it's like, it's like the fire department. Once we built the addition, we put a moratorium on the fire department impact fees. We didn't change ordinance, we just did a moratorium on it. You can do that with this and not change ordinance at this time and just do a moratorium on roads. And if nothing else matches, we need to give back the money we have and stop collecting it. Unlike the parks that are still trying to build out um the preserve, they still have an ability to use some of those impact fees that we've collected for them. So this isn't a consideration of theirs. This is only a consideration of the road ones. So.
And.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I maybe need more education behind the scenes. I, I uh assume that we could continue to use this account for roads.
No, it can only be for the expansion of the width of a road.
So, so through, through our assessment of all our roads, they're all wide enough, they're all.
So the the philosophy behind impact fees statutorily is that impact fees are there to help the town, city, whoever to upgrade facilities
Yeah.
due to growth and development.
Yeah.
So whether that's a fire station, whether that's parks, you know, whether in, in cities sewer and water, you know, in the town, roads. And so the town has road standards.
Yeah.
So the, where the impact fees come into play in the town is where we've had roads that are identified as collectors
Yeah.
that aren't as wide as town standards.
Okay.
So new roads that get built are being built to town standards, so like the developments, so they would never be eligible.
Okay, so let's go back for a second. So all the roads that would be identified as too narrow and, and poor condition, were, we have went through all of them, they're completed?
Well, correct. So, so it, it, it isn't, it isn't about the condition, it's about the width.
Fine, so you're saying we're up to speed.
Correct. We had identified, we had identified 80th, uh 50th, Perch Lake, you know, and, and back then 20th. And the other thing is, is you have to identify those roads in a facility plan.
Okay, now, now one more challenge. Why are none of them roads in Holton? Part of our thoughts, part of the impact.
They're not collectors.
Well, they also.
Look at all the little houses there.
They, they also are, are typically collector roads, you know, where the whole community is gonna be using the road. You know, in Holton, you know, there is no more, you know, residential development in Holton. So you're not gonna be expanding roads because of that.
Well, okay, so just, just to say, I'm gonna challenge it, there's a couple of people there that have lots they wanna sell down there. So does that fall into anything if, if people were to come forward and say, hey, I wanna sell that, this lot? I'm just, I'm just pointing out, there's still stuff down there. You, you're teaching me while we're doing this because okay, yeah, maybe we gotta let it go, but I also know that we ain't gonna get it back.
Well, not unless, not unless, I mean, I, and we've looked throughout the town and we don't really see any other situations, you know.
Don't make me come back and see you screwed up somewhere.
Well, we, we, we've, we've expanded the roads.
All right.
So.
As long as you're confident.
I have a question on that because we have talked a lot about what this map shows for um River Road as an expansion of a bike trail from 35 to the park. Could we use impact fees, say in five years or eight years or whenever we come around to the next road project that we decide we're gonna mill and overlay River Road, but we wanna add more width at this half of it?
That's, that's potential. I'd have to look into that and try to get a handle on that, but that's, that's a scenario that could be, that would need to be identified in the plan.
So I think that's, you know, having this discussion is good because I think you brought up a good point about Holton and I want us to look at River Road too, cause if we're thinking about if county's gonna expand that bike trail through to the park, then maybe we use impact fees to expand River Road on that half of it. It's not quite half, it's about a third of it, I guess.
And that would be my question too. Have we actually, are all of them, are all of the collector roads at the maximum pavement width as identified in our plan that it could be?
I believe that is the case, cause I think that's why we identified the ones. I believe that is the case, cause I think that's why we identified the ones we did, but we, we'll double check that, these are all good questions.
And I think another one, and I don't think it's a collector, I don't believe it's a collector road, but I do think it has high bike traffic would be, is it Rolling Hills?
Yeah.
In Valley View?
Yeah.
Those, I know there's bike traffic on there, and that, that's the next one is, in a future plan, would be, be putting those two roads on there for, and is, could that money be applied? I know we'd have to do a new feasibility study or something, or.
That's a good question.
Or a needs, a new needs assessment, if it was identified in either uh the county or the town bike plan, if, that though these people are using it, would that money go towards that purpose?
Right. If the tap grant lets you do that, I'd have to check it, but I think it's good.
But again, you'd have to have a, a needs assessment that identifies that first.
Right.
So, but the, these are excellent questions, and, and in the last, you know, say ten years, you know, since this has been going on.
Yeah.
You know, there's a whole new focus on bike facilities and, and those types of things, and so, you know, maybe there's, there's some thought at this point where impact fees, you know, with development happening, more bikes, more trails needed, you know, maybe that's eligible, and that's something that I would certainly work with the town attorney on. You know, cause we, we need to make sure that we stay, you know, in line with statute.
Yeah.
Very carefully.
So before we go rewriting an ordinance, I, my question would be is, do we put a temporary moratorium on there just uh until we redo our needs assessment?
I think, I would ask that that would be carried to the next meeting before we make.
So we can have more information.
I think we go to the next meeting. Uh, Todd, you had something back there? Oh, Jay? Oh, okay, well, good, Jay, glad that you could do that. Anything else for anyone? I just think we need a little bit more information before we make a decision. And the fact is, we can continue to collect these until we decide to continue or not continue, and if we don't continue, we just give them back. It's not a huge ordeal here. Yeah. So we'll continue as we are until the next meeting and have him bring in some ideas, if that's okay, all right?
How, how long can a moratorium last?
Well, the fire department's had a moratorium for, geez, since now, just since we paid off the loan, so it's what, three years now, two and a half years?
I think it's.
Whenever we paid off the last loan is when they, we moratorium those.
And all it takes is a board motion and we can?
To moratorium it, she didn't change the ordinance.
So why don't we do that right now?
I'm a little uncomfortable right now, not knowing.
It doesn't hurt either way.
Yeah.
I just.
I mean, I was kinda leaning towards, let's get some more education.
Yeah.
These are a good spot that, like, as a newer board member, would go figure out a little bit more about these impact fees. Cause one of the things I have a question on is, these collection areas may not be in the same area that we would be looking at expanding, something like that.
Sure, I think, you know, there's, there's, there's the statute, which is what it is.
Yep.
Um, I believe that the Wisconsin Towns Association also has information on that. And I, I'm, I'm sure that if somebody called them up, you know, it's probably on their website.
It's on their website.
But yeah, I mean, that would probably be the best.
And the needs, and the needs assessment is on the drive.
Okay.
And, or ordinances, yeah.
And for this town education, Twentieth Street is a collector now that it's approved.
Yeah.
Well, I, I understand that it operates.
A little bit more than it used to.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what I love about this stuff.
See, anytime you leave the potholes in, it just takes away the traffic.
Well, maybe they change how that connects to everything else.
Yeah.
I see, you know, my entire life, nobody's ever come out there, now it's all the time.
So we'll leave it for next month, I'll have it on the next month's agenda. All right, on to, and would you hang out here for parks here, we'll get here in just a minute. Um, update on maintenance issues, the door painting is done, it looks awesome. Um, the painting of the fire hall is finished, it looks great. Um, so we have some good things happening, we did not find any additional issues on structure there. So if you get a chance, have a chance to go into the fire hall, it looks awesome with the new paint and gray, dark gray and, and the red stripe around, it looks incredible. So hopefully you do, he did a great, great, great job. Onto park committee, park improvements for the playground at Town Hall, progress and timing. I know you would like to speak to that, that they're pretty much done for right now out here.
That is correct, they've installed the equipment, uh the, the wood fi, engineered wood fiber is all in. There's, there may be, are there any cleanup items yet, Brian? Okay.
And how's the stormwater pond working?
So in looking at the stormwater pond, it does look like some, probably some relatively minor grading would, would help that water to get around the play area.
Okay.
And so we're kind of, we've been in discussion, haven't kind of figured out exactly how we would recommend that be attacked. Um, however, you know, there is another project coming along.
Right.
And, you know, that, there's gonna be grading in that area for the slide. And so I think, you know, it might make sense to just have that contractor finish that off.
Sure.
You know, all is one part rather than, you know, us coming in and doing it, and then it might get changed.
Sure.
With the next project, so.
Okay.
So I think that's kind of where we're leaning, but we, we've, we've been just talking about it, we have finalized our discussion.
And Ryan stated that John, where I did um give a work, work, um pay request, but it was too late for this meeting, so it'll be on our next agenda. Cause he's required to have it two weeks in advance, and it just came to you a couple days ago, so you'll have to wait. Um, anything else on the slide portion of this? How is that coming along?
Before we move along on the stormwater park, can discussion be that, what is the plan gonna be in the event that the in-ground slide um is not able to be funded this year? I would like to know, cause I really don't want it to say, well, we'll wait and see if the slide goes next year, the year after I, from the water standpoint, I guess I would like a commitment that um is going to be taken care of this year. I, I agree if there's, if this slide project, yes, that's the perfect time to do it, but if there is not a slide of project, I do really feel this needs to be taken care of.
And that's agreed, so we will, we will figure out how to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
I wanted to back up when I could for just a quick second to the door painting.
Oh, yes.
Were there any consequences from the guy that didn't do it right the first time, and we withheld money from his letter of credit and bond and all that?
So we still have that money. We're waiting, probably in July you'll see it, we're waiting for the um price to do the doors because we promised we would give back the difference.
Okay.
So that hasn't happened, we haven't gotten a bill yet on, from BuildWorks for the painting, cause he just finished last week, I think. So he's just gotten done.
Okay.
So in July, I plan on bringing that forward as to our letter of credit, with the bond money that we're holding, say, we're sitting on. And then how much we actually paid to get this done, and then we can determine if we're gonna give them the difference.
Do we have any um extra fees we incurred either from the attorney or from Lee?
Well, well, that'll be all together.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, everything will be together for you, but I didn't do it this meeting, cause we don't have a bill yet from BuildWorks, so I don't know what it cost us to get that done. Yeah, sorry, I kind of rolled over that, I apologize. Okay, so right now, where are we on the slide? I came back to this.
I have a, um, I met with Sarah, there was a meeting on the twenty, twenty percent meeting, and there was some questions and discussion, and we set up the next meeting. Sorry, to, uh, to discuss more of um what it's gonna come to the budget and what we're gonna do. And that will be coming up soon, I'll make sure everybody is in on that meeting.
So will we have some information in July?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So I'll put that back in July.
Twenty-first, I think, I think this is on July twenty-first, but June twenty-first will be the meeting.
Is the next meeting?
Yeah, yep, yep, and I'll send out a, a whole meeting thing so that you guys, whoever wants to be at that camp, cause that would be more informative.
And tap grants, what do we know about that?
I haven't, I haven't heard anything, have you?
No.
I don't think it's, you have nothing.
Okay.
So.
All right, I don't think there's anything else for you, then you can be done.
No, the Fall Festival.
No, I'm just talking about him.
Oh.
These two, I think we're done with these two, thank you, Ryan, for coming, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right, now you can go on to Fall Festival, sorry for cutting you off.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, the um date that we came up with was September seventeenth, that Saturday, and I think we need board approval for that to move forward, or do you need?
No, you need board approval for that. Um, anyone have any questions regarding that? Otherwise, we'll take a motion. I'll make a motion to approve September seventeenth, the Saturday, for our Fall Festival. The second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you gonna pull together some outline of activities and stuff?
Yep, yep, that's on our next agenda for them to do that, and then I'll also um probably do a meeting and pull a meeting with the other um committees also.
Perfect, cause Public Works will have our, our garage sale up there in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Um.
Maybe I can, can I add that, like on the finance committee or something, everyone, we're already together, our, we're all together.
Yeah. Why don't you put that on the finance committee agenda to put Fall Festival update? Cause the finance committee's gonna meet in July.
Yep, yep, but I just, yeah, so yeah, that'd be great.
That would be perfect. Okay, yep, perfect, perfect. Anything else on parks for her? All right, so you're done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Plan Commission, you received, well, I should have him come up, first of all, I had on here Chapter sixty-eight assemblies, I wanna jump to that because on the top I have update on ordinances, as I understand you're not quite ready with sixty-eight.
Right, we, um, we had somebody go through and make the last changes, and then we discovered they were made to a version that didn't have some of the earlier changes.
Shoot.
So.
Okay.
It's going to be ready.
Next month.
Next month.
All right, so I want everyone to be aware of that, um, that you're looking in your drive and reading through that ordinance, so you're ready for that. I also stated, um, I think we sent an email to who's working on it.
Uh, Eric?
Uh, yes, regarding the application, I just wanna make sure that the application is correct for whatever changes have been made in the ordinance. So if you guys wanna check that and make sure on your next meeting that it all.
Yeah, he, he was looking at, at that, and I believe he hadn't found any issues there, but we'll double check.
But I just want, whatever motion comes to us, make sure both are together.
Right.
Perfect. Any questions on sixty-eight for him? Any other ordinances? Update?
Let's see, signs, um, we think that's ready to go to the town attorney.
Okay. So, um, does the board wanna make a motion to send that to the town attorney for his review?
I'll make the motion that the uh Plan Commission's uh current draft of the sign ordinance be sent to the town attorney. I need the ordinance or the number to it.
One fifty-six.
One five six.
One fifty-six be sent to town attorney.
Is there a second? And any other discussion regarding this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that pa, um passes. Chris, we'll have, um, the clerk send you a word version, so you have it in word, it'll probably be on the drive, but I wanna make sure he gets the right version, whatever that might be, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
And you wanna review that again before you send it to the board, I take it.
The signs?
Yes.
Um, only if there's changes from the attorney.
So we'll have.
I'm, I'm sure there will be, but if they're like not substantial, not.
Not substantial, it can come to us.
Yeah.
Now, that's considered a zoning ordinance, so we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing for that. When are you gonna have the zoning ordinance ready to go? Because I kind of would like to do one public hearing for both of them.
Yeah, we're, we're looking right now at the August Plan Commission meeting, which would get it ready for you, hopefully for the August.
For August board meeting.
We, we put a subcommittee together so that we can focus and get things done faster than this one, the month cycle.
Okay. So how about if we have it back on the agenda in July to schedule a public hearings for August for both those ordinances? Does that work for everybody, or do you wanna do it now?
I would say let's bring it back, so that we can confirm that they're ready.
Okay, I'll bring that back in July for public hearings. Perfect, and then on to, um, junkyards and chronic nuisances, you have a document in your drive from, is that from you, Jay? Yes, junkyard report. Oh, so we have seven of them. Um, I guess I'm gonna say, come to Chris Nelson, Chris, have you seen that report?
Yes, I have.
So what is your suggestion as to how we get on top of this, since I know Jay has had multiple interactions?
Yeah, well, I, and I, in reading Jay's report, I, I know that he said um that under the present zoning code, there's, there's uh not much as, as far as an enforcement mechanism, and thinking about that, uh, a junkyard is defined as a, is a defined term under the zoning code, and it's uh certainly a use of property, it'd be a prohibited use, so um, next steps, I could draft a letter, um, you know, potentially um threatening um an enforcement action against that. Um, that would be one way to go. Uh, not to bring up something we've already discussed, I think we discussed it in different contexts, but this is also something that uh could be addressed in a nuisance ordinance as well, um, which would exist outside of the zoning code and, and possibly have a quicker enforcement mechanism. Right now, we're a little limited without one, so we'd have to work through the zoning code, say it's a prohibited use, and basically get a, uh, that had to go to an enforcement, it would, it would go as an injunction, so.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What is the typical timeline on using a, a enforcement injunction? What does that look like as a cost of township scenario, if you've ever gone through one?
Yes, I have, um, and when you're doing a, a zoning injunction, trying to get it used to clear it unlawful and say that they can't continue with it anymore, it's, it's pretty time consuming, I would say that process beginning and is six to nine months. That's one of the reasons why I like having a, a nuisance ordinance, I think it's cheaper and um it would allow the town to, to address these things at a lower cost more quickly.
Would we likely have a greater success rate, also if we had a nuisance ordinance over going through the? I'm just trying to educate myself, so, does it make more sense?
I, I, I certainly thi, think that you would have a likelihood of success either way, I just think one of them's a lot, uh, a lot cheaper and quicker.
Thank you.
Chris, my question, foolish though it may be, is if we go through the injunction process, does this ever go into a court-type action in which there's action between the homeowner and the town that would go as far as a jury-type trial?
Um, I, I don't necessarily think it'd be a jury trial, but yes, it would be a court action with the property owner. We would, we'd be trying to get the court to say that that use is unlawful and can't continue.
Okay.
It, it could potentially go to a jury trial if, if the complainant asked for it.
Or commerce.
Yeah, but potentially, that, that being said, we would, uh, we'd probably resolve this on summary judgment, so I don't think it would necessarily get to the jury.
All right, do, are we on agreement to have Chris send a letter to these seven? And start that, down that path?
Do you need a motion?
Well, that's what I'm asking, yeah, for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion that um our attorney, Chris Nelson, sends a strongly worded, or a legal, legally backed letter to the seven listed members in the uh junkyard summary report. Do you need me to list off all of the facilities?
No, we'll just say that, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Okay, anyone else wanna discuss this, where you're at? We gotta start somewhere.
Can I draw the attention to?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say we have.
Should we let Jay speak first?
Yeah.
Okay, Jay.
Yes, yeah, there's seven, but one has been resolved.
Oh.
Which, which number? Number six, I believe, the thirteen seventy-two fifteen street.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there are no unlicensed vehicles there, it still looks like junkyard, but he's got half an acre to work with, it's right on the county road with setbacks, whatever, it's just the way it is.
Is he off, is he off our road now?
He's off our right of way.
That's what I'm asking, because he was right on.
He was on the right of way in the past, now he's off the right of way, vehicles are licensed, um, um, they're unsightly in that, they're not fancy new vehicles, so we get complaints, when he's gonna clean that up, well, it's, you can have cars.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that one's resolved, it's in there as an example, cause if you wanna know where junkyards was status-wise, that one's done. Uh, one and two are obviously long-term, they were in court with the county. Um, I don't know what ever got. I don't know what ever got resolved before county walked away from that with their zoning. And I know there was one at a I think number two there had a order for big money to be paid to the county. And the homeowner had appealed it. I don't know whatever happened with that appeal. We're not in the loop on that. Trying to think, number seven is no real complaint, only one verbal remark. That's on the value view trail duplex.
I'll take care of that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, perfect.
You know, so.
So you take seven off the list.
So you can take seven.
And six.
Six and seven can come off the list.
What about the one on sixtieth?
Sixtieth, sixtieth, I have not, I've sent a letter, and that went out, we can go today. They got delayed. I had some surgery. I couldn't get that out fast, and then we got it out. And so, no response from the property management company. You know, I don't know if the next thing is to send it certified. But no response. That's more than a junkyard. In that.
I, yeah, we could expand on.
Yes, that, there's other zoning violations there. It's rural residential zoning, and it's a commercial warehouse with trucks coming in and out. And, and inventory for
Gas stations.
Yeah, and whatever are stored in there. So, that's an expanse one, but the junkyard is part of it. And then the one on eleven fifty-four thirty-five, that's like number three? Yeah, okay, that one. Haven't been able to contact the fellow. Actually made contact with the fellow before he got the letter that went out with the one for sixtieth street. And he said, hey, come, you know, yeah, I know, I gotta get it cleaned up. I'll start. I've been, blah, blah, blah. Who knows if he will comply? But he said, stop back in thirty days and see how I'm doing, you know, because I'm gonna make a concerted effort to clean it up. I don't think you can do it in thirty days completely. There's a lot of stuff there. But it's, that's one that never got complained on, and that's, some of that stuff has been there for years. Maybe decades, because it's hidden. You can't see it from any roadway.
Right.
So, the one that has more than one infraction in zoning is the sixtieth street?
Correct.
So.
Well.
I would wanna amend my, my motion then.
Well, let's.
Talk about these.
Go ahead.
So, when that property changed hands from the original person.
Talking about sixtieth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I had brought up, because I had concerns of that for the fire department and what's in that building. And at the time, the fire chief didn't, didn't really bother him any, and I'm, and I looked at this, you'll be able to see that place from the moon when it goes up, so. I you know, what's stored in there is interesting.
Oh, that's concerning.
So. So, I guess it doesn't really bother me, the stuff that's outside. I looked at it from a hat, I don't even know what you call it, I just know there's some stuff in there.
The complaints came in on that property from the adjoining neighborshood. The adjoining neighbors in the neighborhood, because the amount of debris that was, you know, we had some pretty good winds this spring, and the debris that is flying all over on their properties and stuck in the fences and flying across the road, and so people were upset about, and that is garbage. It should be, they're not allowed to just throw it in the air.
I don't even think I see a garbage container out there, I have to pay.
There was a dumpster.
Oh, was there?
It was open.
Okay.
It was open.
Well, so the county has regulation on dumpsters. You have to have curbside, or you have to have a method.
No, you can burn it.
You can burn it.
Was listed in the county.
Right.
Well, what's fun is we left there. We left the county.
So anyway, I'm coming back to this. Do we want?
I do have a question before.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, if, if we have a situation where there is potential multiple infractions on our zoning, what is the process of us getting a list of those infractions? Because if I'm seeing junkyard for sixtieth, this number five, fourteen ninety-one sixtieth street, and that's, I would call the smaller infraction to what may potentially be documented in there, I would want the attorney to do one letter stating, here are the noted infractions that you would be potentially brought up on. So what would our process be to be understanding those infraction, potential infractions to that homeowner?
Yeah, we know that there's a business there. We know there's junk. I don't, we don't have right to enter and search to see if there's any hazardous materials in there, drugs, et cetera, et cetera. The history of the property is it was zoned agricultural in the past, and the person that owned the property utilized it as an agribusiness, which is legal under the zoning and, and the right to farm and all that in the state. And he did handling of manure with large pumps and tubes and whatever kind of stuff, and it was related to that business. Then, he had the building, and there was some concern that he was in violation of building code, because part of it was turned into a residential facility for the previous owner, which is, it was not by code. At that point, the subject owner divided the property and sold it and sold other, to other parcels that he had. And no longer owns it. It's now on, I don't know if there's any intermoni, owners, it doesn't appear so. That transaction on the county record, warranty deed was twenty eighteen. So, and it's a property management company out of Minnesota that owns, was not despised. So, we know that there is a warehousing operation that's commercial, which is in violation of zoning. We know that there's junk. We don't know anything else about what may be going on on the interior of the building, nor do I believe that we have any ability, ability to find out.
Well, let's, let's have Chris Nelson weigh in on that.
Uh, yeah, I, I believe that if there are multiple zoning violations or likely on a property, we should address them all at one time. With regard to the, the ones that are likely alleged operating a, a commercial or industrial, sounds like it's kind of both. Operation on a property that was previously zoned ag and is now zoned or residential, I think we can determine whether or not that would constitute an existing non-conforming use. If it, if it does, then you know, a commercial operation can, can likely continue there. If it, if it does not constitute illegal non-conforming use, then the use would be in violation, and we could proceed proceed with a zoning violation.
Right.
Operating a business in a area where it's not a permitted use.
So I would like to make, I would amend my motion, so if you wanna.
So, if you're gonna amend your motion, are you gonna remove four, six, and seven? Is that what you're gonna do?
So four, we said, we just.
He said he's reconnecting in thirty days, so I'm feeling uncomfortable sending a letter, but we could put him on next month if you don't.
Yeah, I, I would like to know, you know, here's the situation. Okay, I get it. Some folks comply. The guy on fifteenth and E. When I went to him and asked him for compliance in January twenty-one, the guy was deathly ill. Okay, and so we kinda gave him a break, but before the winter, because he was in, you know, keeping our snowplow work. Before the winter of twenty-one, he got it cleaned up. Vehicles licensed, so forth. So what we tried to do in the past, rather than hammer our residents, is to get people to comply with the ordinance and the law. Many times, they're not familiar that there was a law. You know, I moved to the country, it's a country, okay? In the case of the guy that we just have finally got contact, and he's saying, hey, I'll get it cleaned up. If he's making efforts to get it cleaned up, over time, I think it's more conducive for this local government to
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Work towards a compliance. But in the case of the Rolling Hills and the twelve thirty-five, Highway thirty-five, and the, the sixtieth street, those three, you know, they're, they're method or, or movement towards any kind of
Compliance.
Compliance is essentially non-existent.
Okay.
And five is the same way. I think that five we need to get on top of. So do you, who seconded, who seconded his motion? I did, I'll remove my second.
I'd like to make the amendment.
Which one is five?
Sixtieth.
Sixtieth.
So I'm gonna make the motion that based on the junkyard summary report, that a letter be sent from the town attorney for the twelve forty-three Highway thirty-five, twelve forty-five Rolling Hills Trail, and the fourteen ninety-one sixtieth street. With the conjunction that on the fourteen ninety-one sixtieth street, we also list
Go ahead.
The potential in, multiple infraction against the zoning, and the, I apologize, I would also like to add the thirteen fifty-seven Main Street.
I'll second that. Any other discussion on this?
I have a question.
You have to turn it on.
When, and if you have cause to look at sixtieth street again, it appears that from the aerials that they're encroaching on the southern property owner as well.
Their driveway in was created before the true properties were sold, is right on the property line. Both properties were owned by the same individual when that driveway went in. Most of the driveway, save a few feet, is on the northern property or the fourteen ninety-one property. The piles of dirt and old I don't know.
It's rubble.
Yeah, rubble, concrete rubble. Some of that remained on the southern property. That's not this property. When it was transferred to the owner, the old farmhouse.
It was sold as is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's normally what happens.
Yeah.
So that was a shared driveway.
Then there's other piles that are on the, on the northern property.
They always come back to haunt us, those shared ones. Okay, well, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, to be more in-depth for a second is the, some of that dirt was in an agreement for building the driveway, that the dirt was of value in there. Hauling it out of there as they needed on different sites.
Yeah, the one, the southern property has a nice pile of dirt, good dirt. And that's getting hauled off by a local contractor from some previous agreement. And they could store their dirt. Storing dirt is nice, okay? It's fine. But the piles of dirt and large chunks of concrete and other rubble is unsightly as well. I don't know where there's any means of enforcement on that. The zoning ordinance, as, as Chris described, under, beginning, it's, you know, and in D eight, or whatever it is, I can't think of the number now, is and any other use is not allowed.
Right.
There's no tooth, there's no teeth, there's no bite, there's nothing in there for enforcement. Just anything within list is not allowed.
Right.
So, you know.
Well, you can work with our attorney on those violations.
My, my thought is, rather than bringing it all into you every time, so you guys say, okay, send it to your attorney. My view is, okay, I get somebody that's complying, let them keep complying. If they're not complying, then I call the attorney and say, you know, here's the report. You know, and the attorney can go on it, because
Well, the issue.
Otherwise, it comes up, you gotta discuss everybody's dirty business and sound board.
But the issue is, is because they don't have a nuisance ordinance, this is gonna be a pricey endeavor.
Yeah.
So the board is gonna have to weigh in on these, if we're gonna go to the attorney with them. Because it's gonna be pricey to go through this process. Okay. So, go ahead.
Uh, Jay, just the last question I have is, for this eleven fifty-four Highway thirty-five, this is the individual who said that they would attempt to comply within thirty to forty-five days. Would we be expected at the next board meeting to hear a summary of if this individual is at least attempting to comply?
I will probably include in my monthly report, status of that property. And if I own the property, I don't think I could get it cleaned up in thirty to forty-five days. Okay, I'm, there's a lot of vehicles. There's a nice forty-seven Ford truck there, but other than that, the vehicles are not
Do you feel that individual?
You'd want.
Do you feel that individual sincere or BS on us?
Well, we'll find out in thirty to forty-five days.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, if someone is at least trying, I wanna make it the appearance that we're at least going to listen before we come down.
And I totally agree, and, and you know what? Getting off for a second is, the, it's the US, and I don't wanna infringe on people.
I'm the same way.
They kinda gotta, they kinda gotta come in front of us, because, you know, Rick Potence is gonna clear one up, and somebody else may have a better relationship with them, and.
Yeah, yeah. The, the situation is, some of these homeowners, okay, they got a piece of property out in the woods, in a rural area, many years ago. They've been collecting junk for years, okay? Where we don't see them, we don't know it's there. There's probably more. That would qualify, and if, if it wasn't an agricultural thing, the typical farmstead looks like a junkyard with all the equipment that is stored there. Or, or material that's gonna be used later, or this or that. And so you, the attitude of the violator is, this is my land, I got rights. And as long as I'm not affecting the environment and polluting, what do you care? It's my land. And it's, so, I mean, the one, number one there, when I turned him into the county in two thousand ten, okay? He had many vehicles, and I said, you gotta license these things or get them out of here. And he said, these are my, they don't need to be licensed, they're my collector vehicles. And I said, it's a collector vehicle, and there's an eight-inch tree growing through it? It doesn't look like much of a collector to me, and nothing has happened with those vehicles in twelve years.
Same, the same.
So.
Okay.
Thank you, Jay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You got that, Chris? Have fun with those. Alright, campaign, don't go away, this is on, this, come on, come on, campaign sign enforcement. Jay asked me to put this on here for all of you. After the last election, there was a lot of controversy. And he wants to clear some things up, because we have another election starting soon here in August.
Correct.
So have at it.
Here's a situation. I'm the zoning administrator. I deal with zoning. I issue driveway permits. I advise people on setbacks, violations. I call the building inspector, building violations, you're building without license, that kind of thing, for a permit. Through the past, I've been, I don't know, utilized, if you will, as the town constable. We don't have a town constable program. Back when I first started, Marie Schmidt handed me a list of whatever it was, twenty-five people that hadn't renewed their dog licenses. Says, write him a ticket and mail it out. And so I did. Including to a friend of mine, retired St. Craig County deputy that I'd worked with for years, whose dog had died, which is why he hadn't did. We dismissed that ticket, okay? But I did what I was told. In my mind, that should be the animal control officer's job to write the ticket.
Absolutely.
I complained, we got that off of my plate. I shouldn't be writing tickets on something I don't know about, and then going to court on my time, or your time, whichever, to prosecute these people or be there. Most of which don't show up, the judge gives them a fine, it goes on. But I gotta be there in case. The next thing is historically, it's become my job to deal with the campaign signs, okay? Well, what happened this year is, I was told. What happened this year is, I was told, okay, you got the campaign signs in the right of way. Call up the candidate and tell them to move them. Or check and see if they are. I measured some for a couple candidates that were even on county roads, not even our jurisdiction. And they were outside of the right of way, okay? And then there was other persons that had them in the right of way, contacted, you know, said, please get them out of the right of way. And some of the, I don't know, responsibility for that went to another town person who had. Agreed to put up their signs for them, a couple of, of, of candidates. And that person should have known better and put him just slightly off the edge of the roadway, cause he's more elderly and. Infirm than I am, and didn't wanna walk any further. Forgot about that law, he said. At any rate, if you check statute, okay? And you know, when I couldn't go out, I can't go out by law and take them out of the right of way.
Right.
I am not Public Works, okay? And by statute, the only person that's authorized to remove them from the town's right of way is town Public Works. County right of way, you call them up, say there's campaign signs in the county ditches, they come, pick them up, Public Works does. They haul them to Hammond and they're next to the dumpster, you can go get them if you want. We should do the same. I don't know if you paid too many to do it, or now you got a full-time guy, if we get somebody complains, we go out, if it's within thirty, you know.
Never heard.
Whatever. Yep, and so then go out, pick them up, leave them up here by the town garage, they can pick them up if they want. The problem is, the people that complain, saying, hey, this candidate is violating the law, they call me. And I can't do anything. This consternates the member of joke, you know, that's making a complaint. To the point of anger, like, hey, they're violating the law, that's my. My choice of candidate's opposition, and they get upset, as, as anybody would. And it ain't my job, but it's been my job. As far as I'm concerned, when these complaints come in during campaign time. I'd be happy to be the person you call to make the report. And then I've called Public Works or whoever you designate to go pick them up and put them by town hall. Sometimes people put them up. Where they're supposed to go. And then. Joe homeowner that had the sign in his yard, who said it's okay to be in his yard. Thinks, well, it'd be a lot better if I put it right down by my driveway, so people could see it. And Joe homeowner that said, put the sign here, moves it. Well, that just made the candidate in violation. And Joe homeowner, we don't wanna send him to jail for moving a campaign sign. When he's, that's his candidate's choice. We had people putting campaign signs on stop signs, cause they were very excited for the candidate. You can't do that, okay? County road stop signs and poles. I think that we should send out, like I did this year, another letter, saying, here it is, all I did is refer to the statutes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to make it much clearer, do not, you cannot, here's what it says. And it's like tying something to a mailbox, your flyer. No, it's, it's a, it's a federal felony crime to do that once. And we had a person do that this year, they dumped it on thirty, forty mailboxes. Well, that's thirty, forty individual felonies, nobody called to. The, the postmaster general to say, this person is doing this, so there wasn't any complaint, they were. Nicely told, you can't do that, and they comply, and they learn, but there's always gonna be those mistakes. At any rate, I understand the consternation of folks, and as I told you a few months ago, it, it's the hassle of. You cannot believe when the calls come in, day and night, they want action right now. What do you mean, you're not gonna go jerk this out of the ditch, you know, as, you know, whatever the situation is. People get very upset and, and it's like. I don't need to take all that heat, we gotta come up with a process where it's very simple, you call. We make a list, we send somebody from Public Works out, if it's in violation, it goes up next to the, the town. Uh, garage, if they don't pick them up when the campaign's over, they go in the dumpster.
So I am proposing that Jay and I put together a policy and procedure for this. That's outlined that the board would approve. Because it was a very contentious election in April, I believe that there's gonna be more contentious elections down the road. This won't be the only one, and I just think that this will put him in a better spot. Um, signs do come under zoning though, I will say that.
Signs, signs, not campaign.
Not campaign signs.
Not campaign signs, by statute. It, it wipes out iron it. You put up a sign that says, go for removal. Or Joe's house painting, or.
Right.
Teresa's, uh, whatever, and on, you know, haircutting, on the side of the road in the, in the right of way. If it's on a town road, I snatch them up.
Yep.
They're gone. Somebody tells me about it, I snatch them up. That I can do, cause it's a violation of the sign ordinance, whether it's.
Not campaign.
On the right of way or on somebody's property.
Yeah.
They don't have a deal. On the county road, you see it right out here, there's something, there's probably out, out there. That's actually the county's job, but they don't proactively patrol that. They only respond if you call up Rob Cressy and say, we got a bunch of signs at this location, then he sends somebody out to deal with.
They will pick up campaign signs though, I've seen them do that. I know they picked up probably thirty in the town of Hudson at the campaign. Um, a year ago, they just, they came through and just swiped them all because they were all in the right of way, they said they were done. They took them all, and I was like, whoa. One day they were all there and the next day there were none, so, you wanna say something?
I was gonna go back to the letter that you would send out. Now, that's easy to do if it's internal, meaning our board members.
Well, I sent the letter this year to every candidate, whether you were currently my employee or.
No.
Good, or, or currently my, one of my employers or.
My question was, did, did, what about the school board people that were running?
School board, I didn't, I did not include the school board people.
Because I was gonna say that.
It's not. It's, you know, it's, we have no, I don't know who those people are, okay? In two different school boards.
Right.
Okay?
Actually, three different districts.
Well, three, yeah, three.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna say.
It's not like they say, hey, uh, uh, town of St. Joseph, here's the candidates. For, and their home addresses or their committee's addresses that you can forward this letter to. As in the past, all I've been able to do is deal with what I do. And I'm just trying to get, when we sent out the letter, like, here's what you can do, here's what you can't, please comply.
Yeah.
And most people did, you know?
You wanna go first?
I, I think a cou- I think a couple things is, is, it should be zero tolerance. We're all adults, we know how this works, we're, we're always. Dealing with uneducated people, I, I don't, I don't think, you know. Letters and. Stuff like that, everybody knows the rules, this ain't nothing new, right?
But I don't think they do, you know, we had people stapling signs to county road V signs, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, so I think this would be actually a larger.
And that's where I come with zero tolerance.
Yeah. No, but I'm thinking that's the time to do it, is to give it to them then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the, the other thing I was thinking was, would it make sense for the homeowners? Because that did happen in this last election, where a homeowner went out and moved a sign that wasn't compliance, out of compliance. I know it happened to multiple people in this. Um, would it make sense to make something like, kind of a condensed version of this and try and put it in our newsletter? Some way of educating standard homeowners?
It's gonna be too late for this newsletter, so now you're not gonna make it till November, I think.
And the other thing is, you know, you call up the candidates, in this case, we had four candidates.
Right.
Each of them was very appreciative of my call, saying, we'll get it taken care of. I don't know who did that. Sometimes there are persons that are. Very zealous in their support of a candidate, who are not aware.
Right.
Of the rules, and put the candidate. Or candidates in a bad light, but, you know.
But that's up to the candidate to deal with that too. I don't think we have to police, I mean, if they have people putting signs in the wrong places, that's up to them. That's up to them.
And if they do, then they get moved, they get picked out.
They put them in, that was from our neighbors, but they put them in our ditch, and they froze while we were gone, I came back and.
So I'm just proposing to bring back a policy and procedure that the board can agree on here, as to how we're gonna handle this.
I would appreciate it.
Is everyone okay with that for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think a portion of it is. This, this is me speaking, is for directing it towards Public Works like myself. I, I feel I can handle going and picking the stuff up.
Yep.
Okay.
Because I can look at, county does that, Public Works handles that, you know, I, I. I don't see why we should deviate from it, so I will, you know, whoever's in that position should stand up and be prepared for it.
Perfect, I will put that together for you for your approval in July.
Perfect.
Cause the signs will start. August, August is just around the corner, so.
Yeah.
The signs will begin. Okay, we'll get that ready for you, Jay, thank you. Technology, yes, sir?
This last election, I put a phone call out on Thursday to Jay. And on Friday or Saturday. Friday, I emailed a list to the town clerk. Probably to Jay, on Saturday, I sent another list out of all the signs that were not complying. I copied you one.
Yeah, yeah.
I might have copied all the board members or whatever. And I even offered to, uh, to help Jay out and pick him up and bring him to the town hall. So this town is just doing a little song and dance, wagging the tail. They don't wanna do anything. I mean, there's people in this room that put signs in the wrong place, and I'm not saying on county roads. I'm saying on the town roads. That was through this whole township. So I think you guys have just wasted oxygen on trying to come up with something.
No, we have a state statute that allows this, but Jay is trying to say to us, it's not his job. And I'm trying to verify that with the board, that we come to it together with a policy and procedure that addresses this. We can't allow citizens to go out and pick up signs because that is considered theft. So. You weren't on Public Works in April. And it's up to the board to decide who they're gonna appoint in that position, but you were not on there in April, you were a private citizen in April. And so if you would've gone out and removed sign, any of us who go out and remove someone else's sign is, that's a theft.
I didn't touch anything.
I know, yeah, I know you didn't. I appreciate that.
I recall that email.
And township doesn't do anything. And, and Jay just wants to kind of massage it, massage it, massage it.
Well, I, I think we're talking about it here and I, and I, I'm kind of. I guess I'm gonna be able to move forward and show that we're working on this better. Uh, this wasn't an issue prior to this election.
Yeah.
And, and I'm trying to stand up as best as I can to represent the town. With zero tolerance on the sign thing, I do remember your. Great, but I mean. You bringing that forward. Edu- educated myself on where are our responsibilities as a town, right? And yes, you can volunteer, but that was a sticky situation. I chose, I, it, it literally is, the common sense of it is, it's a sticky situation, right? And back to the rights of the property owner, where do they stop? Where do they start? Where's our responsibility? Where does it end? And we're, we're gonna navigate through that stuff, right? You know, I'm, I'm a big fan of, this is still Wisconsin, and I don't need anybody telling me nothing. But we'll have to comply with some stuff or get some stuff ironed out here.
I'm hoping for better.
So.
By everybody's.
And.
When he sent Peter left, I sent him back a response email.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah.
Cause I didn't, you know, I might miss a road, am I gonna drive, you know, a hundred and some miles to cover every road in the town?
Right.
Price of gas, whatever, it's still. It takes some time. It went way out of his.
Way, I was very thankful that that occurred, but the point is, if I go into that ditch and pick it up. I'm violating Wisconsin statute.
Correct.
I can go to jail.
Well.
Okay?
If, if, if people wanted to push the issue, and some people might.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I'm saying, all you gotta do is designate it to Public Works. A Public Works employee's got every right under statute to pick them up.
Right.
I'll, I'll go off track for a second, I'm, I'm well educated on the sign deal because, uh. I'll, I'll leave all the names out of it, but I had decided to help a judge. And I, and I put up a lot of signs and then, uh. Some, some of them signs were in county, some of them were hanging off other stuff and, uh. What was super fun about it is the judge noticed, hey, all my expensive signs are starting to be missing, I'm like, I don't know. And you know what's fun is it went way up the food chain. And we found some of them behind the county shop in Hammond.
Yeah.
And there was big repercussions and great education for me and the judge on how this stuff works.
Perfect, that's great.
Let's get it ironed out.
It'll be done.
So, going forward, since the next one is gonna be a primary and there's not, to the best of my, there's no town officials. On this gonna be happening, um, this will be really interesting to see if the complaints continue.
Yeah.
Um, since it's going to, it's already partisan and. I was gonna say, I know that it does not have town officials on it, I'll see if the complaints are.
Yeah.
And the shenanigans are the same as they were in the April local election, so that'll be the interesting part to see if.
Well, April won't be like, April won't be like November.
Difference is, is you don't have to deal with frozen ground and some of those things, but those, there were signs that. Um, they were right in the gravel, but never disappeared, they weren't, we didn't get lists of those.
Yeah.
Right, right off, right on our shoulders, so we'll see, we'll see how the next, next primary goes.
Okay. Um, technology committee, updating issue on AT&T, the bill just keeps coming and I've sent multiple emails. They haven't sent us to collections yet, usually that's when I get something to happen, so right now I'm still in this holding pattern. And the bill's like, I don't know, and we're up to twenty-four hundred dollars now, so.
Is this anything we can engage the, the, the town attorney on? To send us here or something?
Here's the thing, oh, I've already sent those wonderful emails. Um, here's the thing, you get someone who calls you, you call them back and they say they do not take any information over the phone.
Okay.
That if you want to talk to them, you have to email them. So I have emailed this person repeatedly for the last three months, saying the same thing over and over and over again. We never authorized this account after we closed A account. We never authorized you to set up B account, which you did, and we're not paying this bill because we've never authorized this account.
Okay.
In other words, we terminated our account with AT&T, I have the termination confirmation, everything. And a month and a half later, they set up a brand new account in the town of St. Joseph. And it's continued to move forward for the last two and a half, almost two years. I can't get them to terminate it, I can't get them to stop it. So until the last, you know, we had two issues with them, the last issue went to collections. And that's how I was able to stop it, cause I said to collections, we're not paying, and this is why. And we have a termination notice and somebody higher up on the food chain finally said, you're right, you do. And they credited back the four thousand dollars they said we owed to them and terminated it. This second issue I haven't been able to terminate.
So is this second issue tied to the telephones specifically? Okay, so this isn't that fiber.
The fiber one's the one we got the money, but we got to get out of there, so.
Isn't there a human sitting in the brick building over in Minneapolis or someplace that was just.
Oh, no, are you kidding? No. Chris Nelson, have you ever dealt with AT&T on something like this? Oh, he's shaking his head, yes, I like that.
No, it, 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 it is, it's similar to, to your experience, I don't think it would be. Any better or easier if I, if I were doing it or anybody else is doing. Any better or easier if I, if I were doing it or anybody else is doing it. They don't respond, don't respond, don't respond. You can't get over anybody. Uh, you can threaten to sue them all you want. They don't care, you know, whatever.
So I'm just not paying the bill. I'm just not paying the bill.
Yeah, so this wouldn't even make sense to take small claims court and just playing bait and switch and see if they dismiss because it would just be an expense to us.
Right, and they're not gonna answer you. Not until they send you to collections.
Well, then we just let it ride.
So I'm just letting it ride. It's at twenty-four hundred right now. We were at almost four thousand on the other one before they finally gave us credit. And Michelle and I have a little bet going here as how long this is gonna take to get done because I was so happy with the first one and now this one is just rolling along. Yeah, they laugh every time they get the bill mailed. They laugh. It goes in a folder. The folder's about to stick in there right now.
Oh, that's true.
And every single email.
Any, um.
Every single email, I'm not nice. I just want you to know, I'm not nice. There's no sugar on that email. I keep saying, no, no, no. So we'll see. Have fun with that. Update on broadband. I don't know that we have any update except mid code did do a presentation before the, um, um. Technology Committee. Technology. I was trying to think which one. Technology. Um, does the board want to hear that presentation next month or do you want to wait? How would you like to handle this?
Uh, if it's very long and we can have it early in the meeting.
Sure. I'll ask them to come. And then.
That's what we choose to do, like, like earlier.
Well, I would like to hear from them one more time and see where they're at now that they've had a chance to go back.
Yeah, because I think when they were in the technology committee, they, they weren't gonna say. Anything about project plans until all of the PSC grants have been decided.
Which would be June, July.
Yeah, they said the end of June was when they were expecting those PSC grants to be decided, so.
Okay. And then the changeover to dot gov that, do you want to just speak to the, got done? You can turn your mic on.
Yep, the changeover happened. All the emails are still, I guess, in conjunction with the dot com emails. Um, and if anybody has any issues, let me know. But we should be good to go.
So it's automatically dumping into your dot com right now or vice versa. I guess it's vice versa.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions on that?
I was just really happy to see it got done.
Me too.
It's done.
For us less techie people, are we still. Getting, uh, emails? You know, because it says Saint Joe Supervisor Four comes over automatically?
Yes. The only one that has, she has two separate accounts right now because her dot com one. Um, has to be in place yet for ARPA.
Yeah.
Um, until we get through all that in the next two years, she has to keep the dot com. But her dot gov's are dumping in there.
Yeah.
So she does have both, but she's still actually keeping. If she replies to you on the dot com, it's still coming through his dot com because ARPA won't take it any other way.
Okay, no, I just.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to think my.
No.
Thing at home was like, oh, it's pretty low profile.
He took care of it all. It's wonderful. It's all done. Okay, public records requests. Would you like to speak to that? That you've gotten a couple of new ones.
Yeah, I've had about three new public record requests, but. Um, actually four. Three of them have been completed. One is still outstanding, but it just arrived on Tuesday this week.
And I think, did you put that in their email to them? You emailed it to them in the last one? Yeah.
I believe so.
The last one's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
There's a lot involved there.
Do we know how much effort the office is exerting on these?
Huh, yes.
So, m- my concern is if, if we're exerting a, an enormous amount of energy on these things. What are we pushing off to accommodate that? Right? Because I think of like time allocation, I expect five hours a week or something like that, right? And if you're saying it's twenty hours a week worth of work. What are we, where are we, you know, losing ourselves or how are we utilizing that time otherwise?
Well, it's hard to say.
We're driving our staff crazy.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
There are some of them that are easily done in a half an hour.
Okay.
For instance, if you want a recording of a meeting, that's easy for her to do in five or 10 minutes.
Okay.
This last request that came in is probably gonna be hours. Um, and in that case, she will do the first half hour and then let the person know that there's going to be an additional charge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just had one that went out and they billed the client for the additional charge. It should have been collected, but it's an attorney, so. I'm not too worried about it, but, um. This one, in the case of a private citizen, they'll have to pay in advance and we can refund part of that if you don't use it all.
Okay.
Um, the town of Hudson has a pending records request for fifteen hundred dollars. At forty bucks an hour, you figure out how many hours that is. That is a ton of hours on that public records request. So there are some public records requests that are extremely expensive because of the amount of time it's gonna take. If you read this last one, it has a lot of detail in it that's gonna take a lot to bring it in. So it takes a lot to pull that together. You're not required to, um, put together a record that doesn't exist. You're only required to give that record that does exist.
Yeah.
Um, so it takes time to go through all that and find it.
Yeah, and my, my question is more leading around the time cost than the monetary one, right? Because if Terry has to spend twelve hours on a request, what are we losing in her time at twelve hours, right?
You're losing a lot.
Yeah, and then what is that costing us moving forward? Is there something the board can do or a discussion we can have to manage this? In a better way?
And the next question is, is when, which is spending the twelve hours doing that, what is?
That's exactly where I'm going with this.
It's actually double.
Yeah, yeah.
What we're given, you know, behind the scenes that we're, we're talking, actually costing us double.
Yeah.
And you have to know that many of these public records requests have to go through Chris Nelson before they can be disseminated. So we're paying for him to do that also.
So is that, is that included in their half an hour?
No.
So we're just putting that cost?
We're footing that cost. And it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
Do we have a line item for those broken out?
No, it comes under board expense.
That. If that was a business, you'd shut her down.
Here's the thing. Public records is a right of the public to have a record.
Yep.
They have the right to that, so they can make as many public records requests as they wish.
Yep.
It was an interesting thing that took place over a year ago. Somebody requested how many public records had been asked for. Prior to twenty twenty-one, and I think there'd been two in the seven years prior to that.
Um.
Since twenty twenty-one, I can't tell you. You know, we had, um, an interim clerk in here that, that's all she did was public records requests. Because besides signing paperwork, she didn't have time to do anything else because that was so overwhelming, the quantity of them back in twenty-one. So now they've slowed down a little bit, but we still have some significant. Ones coming in and we're just want to make the board aware that there is a cost involved here. And Terry, and Terry can keep tracking her time for that because she has to track it for these people anyway. But there's definitely a cost.
Well, can, so can you, for educational purposes here, is, what is the value of per hour? You know, what?
What are we charging per hour?
We, we, in our, in our.
Yeah, how, how do you?
In our fee schedule, we charge forty bucks an hour after the first half hour. Does that cover her, her? No, it does not. But it's kind of a balance between the people in the office.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with. Hearing that number because. Uh. It's gotta be tabulated and watched.
Yeah, my other concern would be the legal fees that the board is just putting under expense.
Well, I would, I would almost go with, for every hour that she's doing is three fifty for the attorney.
That's all apart.
Okay. That's just me on the street, man. The legal expense to the, to the.
No, you cannot charge. No, you cannot charge them. You can't charge for redacting. You cannot charge for legal oversight.
Okay.
You can only charge for the compiling of the record. So say, say I ask for all the public works bills for the last four months. However long it takes her to pull those together. Is what I can be charged. Anything redacted off of those or anything that the, um, attorney may determine cannot be divulged.
Mm-hmm.
That's all on our dime.
Okay.
The copies are on our dime. So what happens with these records is that she's making a copy of every record.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to the attorney, then the redacting takes place.
Mm-hmm.
And then those copies are then finally transmitted to the person who's asked for them.
Correct.
And they pay per copy of paper or they pay for, um, electronic, or don't have to pay for electronic. Yes, Chris?
I, I just wanna say that I, I don't review every response to a request. It's only when we have questions about it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So like all the ones that ask for copies of meetings, we just throw those out because that's easy. There's no determination.
Yeah.
But it's stuff that has things that might have to be redacted.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from anybody? All right, we'll move on. Tractor driver pay. Chris, was this you that wanted this on here? Having to do with the other tractor drivers?
Uh, the other, the other guys were asking where that's at and, um, I was left speechless, so here we are talking about it. I didn't know if they should go up to the same or we consider them where they were because.
I see what you're saying.
You know, and.
Because they're all experienced and are you using them at all?
I didn't use any of them words at all. How, in, in, I'm taking the board to, to talk about it. Uh, um, I considered our new guy. The. Guy that works all the time, you know, more, more of a permanent guy, right? So I felt his wage was fine. We agreed upon all that, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then, uh, other tractor drivers, I felt, well, you're, you're part-time. It's a fair wage and.
How many others do we have? Two, three, four?
We have, uh, Kevin Multer and Mark Simpson and. You know, like the other evening, I had shared with some.
So we, so we have two, but two other ones beside, um. So those two, how much time are they on the tractors this year or do you?
From our new guy, probably not much. I would hope not.
Because I was gonna say.
Uh, the, well, the new guy's putting the hammer on. He's laying down the law. So, and I had shared with Kevin, who was here, I had said, hey, you know, working around your golf schedule and. Whatever else you got going. I got a guy in the chair and then, which is fine. Mark personally had shared with me, he'd like to go on vacations and not. Sweat worrying about the lawn and I got it handled. We're, I'm, we're, we're blessed this year.
Yeah, because only one person can sit in the tractor and mold ditches at a time.
All, all I threw out there was if the man wanted a break, I got your number.
So what price are they at now? Eighteen?
Twenty.
Twenty. They're at twenty?
Twenty, so, so I just. Put it out to the plenty fair.
I'm comfortable.
While we're on this subject, I don't know if it needs to go on the next agenda or not. Death fluid is, uh, a nice new fun thing to try and find. So I'm proposing that we go from jugs to a fifty-five gallon drum.
Does it keep that long? I don't know.
I think we'll go through a drum.
Okay.
In a, in a summer?
Can our supplier provide a drum? Can our supplier provide the drum?
Yep.
And then do we know what, is there?
Rather than later.
Is there a bulk difference for us? Is there some?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, considerably, but I mean, we all know the difference between a six-pack and a case, right? So.
Oh, I meant cost-wise, there's gonna be.
It's better, but I mean, in, in, in the lack of screw around, so like.
So just tell me, how much, how much does it go through, say?
Every time, every time you go get fuel, it needs a jug and.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Terry, I sent Terry to the store to go get jugs.
She asked me what it was. Thankfully I had diesel pickups and I could tell her.
Oh, and, and then one other item, I'm gonna bring in, uh, an application to. Have a charge account at the hardware store in Somerset so they can deliver death fluid, grease. Other items where we don't have to send out the.
The clerk to go get them.
Both ways.
Both ways.
Go run to shopping.
Okay, well, why don't you bring that on to the next? I mean, I, I can go ahead and approve that fifty-five gallon drum if everybody's okay with it. We'll just approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. And bring the app, and bring the credit card thing. We'll have to come to us.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't let me forget. I'm gonna put this on here. Hardware store. What is the name of it?
B and J.
B and J? Somerset, so I don't forget. Thank you.
Do you need a motion for twenty-one tractor driver points? Okay?
Well.
No, we just talked about.
We just talked about. So implements of husband reordinance, that is in your drive. This is something we should be, um. Doing every year at this time so that it gets done, so that it applies again to next year. Um, it is in there. It's a state form that we fill out. This requires people to get a permit. I did do a series of permits and I can't remember where they were out of, but I did do a series of permits this year for someone on, on this. Particular ordinance that applied. Because they applied to the county and then town of Richmond, town of Warren and us, ourselves.
Yeah, they were out of good hue coming through here.
Yeah, someplace. I can't remember. Anyway.
Need more of this authorized, you and Terry to sign this and.
No.
He doesn't need to approve it. Yeah.
Do you?
I moved to approve the implemented custody ordinance for the year twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Do you have these permits now?
Well.
Can you get your hands on them?
Yeah, we did them by email to them. Why?
So you're just taking them from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
He filled out the permits. We just have to sign off.
You're a farmer.
As the county.
Yeah, they're really complicated and they don't take in track.
I know.
They're really a pain.
They fill them all out.
Unexplained pain and you call the state and they don't even understand what they wrote.
Right. So they fill them all out. They had county signatures on them and then I signed off on them. So I had talked to Robbie on them, so I was comfortable. If it's not, then Robbie and I are going to jail together. That's all I'm gonna say.
Just go full.
I'm just doing the best I can. Okay? Motion is made in second and all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. It passes. And then you wanted this WTA health survey on, health, insurance survey on here?
I just thought it was worthwhile, quite filling out and it said that they only wanted one person as representative of each municipality to. Complete the, uh, forms, so.
Did you do it?
No.
Did you want the?
I put it on the agenda for.
So you want?
I think that it's kind of a payroll thing, so I would think that if.
The clerk can do it?
That would be good.
Okay.
Or whoever's doing our payroll.
Yeah, we'll have her take care of it then. All right.
Thank you.
Firefighter and first responder, it's Mann and Field. Um, the application was here. Does anyone want to make motion on this one?
I, I reviewed it and I, I will make, I will.
Lori, can you turn the mic?
Move Mann. Move to approve Mann and Field will be. Um. Approved to. Enter, be an entry level first responder, fire department person.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. I opposed. It passes. And then appointment for committees and plan commission. The plan commission, as I understand, did not make an appointment at this time on their alternate. Um, but I did receive an email from Janet. Because I had appointed Mark Van Ass to the Parks, Trails and Rec Committee and he wants to be the second alternate. And Mary Tyson will move from the second alternate to the plan commit, or to the Parks, Trails and Rec Committee. So I wanted to get that done since she, they made some changes there. So I will make a motion to change the park trails and rec appointments so that Mary Tyson. Is a regular member and Mark Van Ass is an alternate too.
Second.
Any other discussion regarding that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. It passes. Just to ask you, Anton, you hope to have your alternate decided at your next meeting so I can put that on for July?
That's correct.
Okay, so this will be back on for July so we can get that done. Um, approval of the town board minutes, those are in your drive. And Justin won't be able to vote on that because he was not here for that. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the town board minutes for, uh, what was the date? April or May?
May.
May twelfth?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on those? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed. And you and Justin do not vote on that. Um, payment of checks. Anybody have any questions on these? Um, we I'm just we have some fund transfers, but otherwise, uh, the Stan Tech bill, I just wanted to point out on five twenty five of twenty two, there's a Stan Tech bill for one thousand five hundred sixty seven dollars. They sent us a draft bill for May and did not send us the complete bill, so we paid them their difference that they were old on the May bill. So I will make a motion to approve checks number two, three, two, seven, four through two, three, three, four, two, including transfers and payroll liabilities.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Um, and just so you know, Justin, we all sign this and it goes to the clerk when it's done.
Thank you.
And budget and bank balances, there are your, she did get your bank balances to you, so there, those are on there. And your budget is in your packet today. Anyone have any questions on those? Um, and anything else that you want in the next meeting that I haven't thought about? Fantastic. All those, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris Nelson.
Thanks for letting me join on this.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.